Hello, good evening. Welcome to our August 17th virtual regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano.
Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of July 20th and 30th.
A motion. I'll second.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
President Alper?
Yes. All right, Dr. Cascione Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, members of the board and community members in attendance tonight. We appreciate you being here. The number of reports under the superintendent section of the agenda, I'd like to start with some positive good news and recognize a student, an alumni of West Orange High School, Michael McCullum. Sure if he and his family are in attendance this evening, if they are, or even if they aren't. We wanted to provide some recognition to Michael here in West Orange. Michael was the recipient of the Essex County School Board's Unsung Hero Award. And every year, the Essex County School Boards recognizes a student from each school district for this award. Each one of the students inspired students and staff with their courage, determination, and hope. And you know, who might not necessarily have gotten, you know, recognized in another manner, but their spirit of courage and determination merited that recognition. And so obviously because of the COVID-19 closures, the School Boards Association wasn't able to do their annual county dinner, which is always a great event, but we wanted to make sure that locally here in West Orange that we acknowledged Michael. Michael, congratulations on being an inspiration to your fellow students and staff. We wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Much good health and happiness in your future. Moving along to the second portion of the report. Every year, Superintendent, I must report out to the board on our student safety data system data. This was previously known as the EVVRS or the School Violence and Vandalism Report and Data. And just a sampling of, you know, of the categories which fall into this are under violence, assault, fight, threat, sex offense, HIV, vandalism, damage to property, burglary, theft, under substance offense or alcohol, marijuana, drug paraphernalia for use confirmed. And then we have the same for possession as well as unauthorized drugs, weapons, possession, possession sale, and then possession otherwise. So I am happy to report that globally speaking, the district experienced a decrease in 16 instances of school violence and vandalism during the 2000s. And we did a look back period of the first half of the year as the idea would be that comparing last year from December through the end of the year and this year would sort of be like apples and oranges because we weren't in school. So we did a comparison from the first half of the year from last year and the year before. And again, there were 48 total incidences of violence and vandalism in July through December 2018 and 32 total. We witnessed a decrease in virtually every category in assault, eight to seven, fights, six to three. Threat went up by one. Our HIV went from 13 to eight. Damage to property went from one to zero. Burglary went from two to zero. Alcohol remained steady at zero. Marijuana use went from 13 to six. We had no drug paraphernalia incidences, no alcohol incidences for possession. Marijuana went up slightly in possession from two to four. Drug paraphernalia went up slightly from zero to two. And unauthorized drugs remained at zero. Possession of weapons was zero. Possession and sale of weapons was zero and possession otherwise went from two to zero. So overall, a positive decline. And while I can attach an empirical, you know, explanation for that, I would suggest may have to do with a number of things. We have recently incorporated in virtually all of our schools, some form of a positive behavioral support initiative. We have also begun to pilot at our middle schools and our high school, some restorative disciplinary practices. And I do believe that those interventions have had some impact on this, but overall a decrease of 16 incidences of school violence and vandalism. So a positive. I would just open it up. Any questions from the board?
Scott, quick question. Vaping, we know is something that's increased across many districts. Is that included in this or is that being added to this report?
Yeah, so vaping, when, so our procedure for vaping is that it is a, it is an automatic, it's an automatic, we follow the substance abuse policy for that, meaning if the student is in possession of a vaping device, the student undergoes mandatory drug testing off site. If that comes back positive, then the vaping would be noted as a marijuana offense and the vape device would be noted as drug paraphernalia. If it comes back as simply in containing of nicotine or tobacco and the student was found to be negative, then it would be handled as a non-school violence and vandalism under the smoking policy. So when you see here the marijuana infractions and the drug paraphernalia, it's very, it is, you know, and I don't have that data with me, but it is very, very probable that a percentage of those may have very well have been a result of the confiscation of a vaping device.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Ms. Trick Scales, I cannot hear you now. No, I cannot hear you at all. Can you plug in and unplug or unplug and plug in, I should say? And we just make sure that on the bottom left that you are keyed into the correct microphone.
I didn't move anything. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, fabulous. Okay, so Dr. Cascione. I was just saying perhaps for the upcoming year, if we could get a report perhaps quarterly or at least mid-year, that would be very informative for the board.
Not a problem. We do, we do a mid-year submission to the state. So that could certainly be an appropriate time to provide an update.
Right. And this is wonderful. I mean, we usually want to see things go up, but this went down and we should celebrate that. This is, this is very good. So thank you to the staff and the administration for holding the line and to our students for doing the right thing.
Any other questions from the board?
Great work all around.
Okay, moving on to our third item. I'm very pleased to have, to have with us tonight a number of guest presenters. Just going to set the table for them and then allow them to take it away. We have with us our supervisor of ESL and World Languages, Mr. Felix Plata. And we also have with us Dr. Millar with Rutgers University. We, I think what we recognized during the, I think what was reinforced for us during the school closures was the need and the importance of being able to really understand on the household level, some of the challenges that were being encountered and experienced in particular by our culturally and linguistically diverse families, in particular our Hispanic families. And so we, Mr. Plata and I began discussing this idea of some sort of a home liaison or a community parent liaison that could really kind of get into the community, establish relationships, build trust and understand what those needs were so that we could more strategically connect those families with the services that we have to offer in our school district and outside of our school district as well. And so I asked Mr. Plata to begin to understand if there were organizations or outside parties with whom we could partner who brought existing capacity and experience to bear in this way. And that research path led to Rutgers University. And so Mr. Plata and Dr. Millar are here to, and I think we have Andres Cano, who is the individual who will be working, who is employed through Rutgers, but who we've selected to be our parent liaison. I believe he will be on the call as well. And so we'll be talking, they'll be talking specifically about this program and what it can, and what it can do for our families and for our district, but also speaking in kind of more broad brushstrokes about, you know, really what has become more of a coherent strategy for parent outreach and support. And, you know, really along the lines of equity and understanding the specialized needs of various groups within our community. And so it's with a pleasure that I introduce you, Mr. Plata, Dr. Millar, and Mr. Cano.
Mr. Plata, you just have, there we go.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Cascione. Thank you. Now sharing the presentation. Can I share the presentation yet?
We're waiting with bated breath, sir.
Ah, that's what I love to hear. It says you cannot start screen share while other participant is sharing.
Yes, I just have to cancel mine for you.
Okay.
There we go. Three different computers I'm working on. You should be good now.
Okay, again, thank you, Dr. Cascione and the board and the community. So my name is, again, is Felix Plata. I am the supervisor of ESL and World Languages for the district. We also have with us Dr. Suzie Millar. Ms. Millar, you're there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Mr. Cano, Was he able to get on?
He's here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, perfect. So yes, we are, as Dr. Cascione had mentioned, we're very excited about this partnership. As, as we all know, this, this was a need. We had known it and with what had occurred in the spring, it just brought it more to light. Okay, so let me start with. Okay, so our, the vision and the mission of the ESL as well as the World Languages Program revolve around three pillars. One, preparing multilingual learners who are globally competent and also to develop their cultural responsiveness. So our mission and vision, we consistently and continuously like to emphasize that and revisit that with all the decisions that we make. A little delay here. Okay. So as Dr. Cascione had mentioned, this presentation is regarding the proposal that we have for professional service agreement with Rutgers University, their behavioral healthcare part of their, of their program and with obviously the West Orange Board of Education. The purpose of the proposal and the partnership is to provide a bilingual family resource services for our English language learners and their families. The funding of this, which has come through the ESSER grant. So just to give a little background or snapshot of our West Orange school community, the West Orange school community, of the 6,699 students that we currently service in our public schools, over 1,500 of those students come from homes that speak languages other than English, as well as over 50 languages are spoken in West Orange homes. As well as over 600 of our current students, again, this is of our total student population, were born outside of the U.S. and that makes up over 60 countries. Now of those almost 7,000 students, of almost those 7,000 students, 278 of those students are identified as English language learners. And the breakdown of those students are 158 at the elementary level, 59 at the middle schools, that's six through eight, and 61 as of today at the high school. So as, as part of the ESL program, we meet at least from three to four times a year with our bilingual parent advisory committee. And during the past school year, the 2019 through 2020 school year, during those meetings, and this was prior to the e-learning and so right before, right before March, we received feedback from, from the committee, which had three main, three main parts. One, ELL parents were not always aware of the resources that were offered to them, either from the community or from the school system. A second bullet is that they had suggested that we offer parent trainings in the home languages because they did acknowledge that the schools are providing activities and they do send the home notices in other languages. But when the presentations aren't done in their native language, they're not, they're not reaping the full benefits of the presentation. So they recommended that if whenever possible, if we could have these separate presentations in the native languages or somehow support the presentations in a native language that would benefit them, then in turn allow them to support their children at home. And a third recommendation that they had made was if we could develop a support system for bilingual parents who are newer to West Orange. Those new, new, new parents and new families, at times because of the language barrier, it would take them longer to, to, to become familiar with, with the school system and with all the resources that West Orange has to offer as long as the surrounding communities. So those were three, three main buckets of feedback and suggestions or recommendations that we, we received from the bilingual parent advisory committee. Then e-learning commenced rapidly, as we all know. And through observations, we saw the following. Number one, that ELL students and their families, that they required extra support to close that digital divide that existed, which we all had known had existed, but just came to full light with, with the e-learning environment. So that digital divide really composed of three steps. The first was that initial access to technology, which the district did provide Chromebooks and the Wi-Fi hotspot devices that parents and families may, may not have had. But there was a technical issue, again, a lot of it having to do with, with the language barrier that where they weren't able to acquire it or had difficulty acquiring it in a more timely fashion. The second was, once they had that access through, by obtaining the Wi-Fi devices and the Chromebooks, it was then navigating the assignments or navigating the technology. That was the second layer of challenges that, that we had to overcome with the families and we supported them. The third was, once they were able to navigate the platform, was then actively and effectively participating and successfully completing the assignments, the learning tasks and engaging with the teacher in the Google meets or with the assignments that the teachers had assigned. So that was all the digital divide that really came to light. The second, through observations and conversations with families and, and students and the staff that we had interacting as much as possible with, with the families, was that we recognized that there was a need for strategies and resources for us to address the learning gap that, that was, was occurring, especially during that initial time of the e-learning. Thirdly, through conversations with families, we realized that the parents were not always aware of, again, or comfortable accessing the resources, again, this is even resources outside of the education system that may have existed in the community and they just didn't have the access to it. And fourthly, we realized that there's a need to offer parent trainings and tutorials in the home languages. Again, this was expressed during our parent advisory committee, but we saw clearly that during the e-learning experience, we needed to reach out to them and support them in their home languages as much as possible so that they could effectively then support their students and work with us as partners in education of their children. So some, and then this, this, just this, a few of the action steps that we, we took, we thought about and that we're continuing to plan, plan for as we move forward with the learning in September. First, in addition to the tech support hotline, this occurred, we, we assigned point people who were identified to provide the bilingual families with support through the e-learning platform and assignments. Most of those point people, again, this is in addition to the countless teachers who were calling home, emailing home. These were specifically identified teachers or support staff who could communicate in the native language to those families. And most of them were ESL or were language teachers or bilingual guidance counselors. Secondly, an elementary, in, in understanding that gap that was occurring, we planned for an elementary summer program where we utilized the iReady program along with live Google meets to support the ELLs as well as other students who receive BSI services. And that programming began at the end of July and is continuing through, through August to, to August 27. Third, we identified that there was a need to improve upon the intervention services that we were providing and see if we can find a, a resource that would work under the, the current conditions, which, which is virtual instruction. So we identified two programs, fast forward, which really focuses on the, the English language acquisition and providing individual targeted instruction based on students taking assessment and then the teacher supporting that intervention through that program, which we use that program primarily with grades K to eight. And then iReady, we're using at the high school level. So that's, that will be going into effect in, in September. Again, we do have that, that pilot program with iReady over the summer, but it goes to large scale implementation in September. And then that leads us to, we're using Title III funding to create an ELL family resource committee made up of instructional staff and support staff who can on a monthly basis target that need for, of, a parent academy, a bilingual ELL parent academy, where we can turn key information, address the needs of the students and their families and provide it that support in their, in their native languages. And then the last bullet here, which really leads to the focus of this presentation is we researched and developed a partnership with Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare School-based Services to continue to develop that, that support for the ELL families.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so I'll turn this part of the presentation over to Dr. Suzie Millar, who will continue to speak more specifically about that partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Plata, and thank you, Dr. Cascione and board for having me here today. We are so excited for our partnership. And the unique thing with Rutgers school-based programs is that we don't have a cookie cutter model or approach to how we bring school-based services to schools. We really work collaboratively with you to create a model and a system that's going to work for your school. And I'm so excited about this one in particular because myself and Mr. Cano are both first generation immigrants to the U.S. So we both were English language learners and so that community is near and dear to our hearts. So the goal is to bring this family resource coordinator to the building that will really be able to strengthen the relationships between the multilingual families and the school community. So really work on increasing the comfort level of the families to utilizing the services within the school and then stretching it out so that they also have access to and are familiar with the resources that are in the community. As Mr. Plata mentioned, sometimes, you know, families aren't aware of the resources that are available to them within the community. So we will do all that legwork and present you with those resources so you know what they are, how to access them, what you're entitled to, what your rights are, so that you're able to really access those services within the school and the community at large. And really, we want to create this healthy environment for learning for these students and their families. So our partnership really helps us to promote academic and life success for all of our students and really helping the ELL, ESL students to know how to access these resources. So Rutgers U B H C, just to give a little bit of background, it's the largest provider of behavioral health services within New Jersey. Our staff have expertise within a wide range of areas. And as I had mentioned, we really create models to meet the district needs. At this time, we're in 30 different school districts throughout the state. And our program's very comprehensive, so it brings all the services that the district needs right into the school building. So the families don't have to go anywhere else to access the services. We bring them right to you. We explain to you how to access them and then really hold your hand as you're seeking those services within the community. And the last piece is, as the largest provider, we have a continuum of care. So we have every level of care from inpatient level of care to outpatient level of care to mobile response with, which goes into the home. So we're really able to connect each child and each family with the right level of care and then make sure that you know how to access it within the community. So why are districts reaching out to us? Well, schools across the country are really recognizing the importance of providing more mental health awareness within their buildings. Now more than ever with the pandemic, we're definitely seeing the need for this. Mental health is in the forefront. And prior to the pandemic even, research was showing this, that more than 20% of children and adolescents have a mental health concern. So now that our children have really been exposed to something that has never happened in any of our lifetime. So now more than ever, we really need to identify resources, identify the children that are in need and make sure that we're supporting them and their families. So school-based services, as I had mentioned, were in 30 different school districts throughout the state. So schools are recognizing the need more and more and really looking to identify how to provide these services in an accessible way for their students. So our premise really is that emotional success leads to academic success. So we really want to make sure that we're looking at the child as a whole. So we're looking at social, emotional and physical wellbeing. So by partnering with the district, by partnering with community providers, we're able to meet all the needs of the child in order to really help support that academic success. If a child's basic needs are not being met, they're not going to be able to self-actualize and academically be present. So we look at them through a well-rounded approach where we can really identify all those needs and make sure that we're meeting them. And then we're providing services to those who would not otherwise have access, whether it's because of a lack of awareness of what's available or feeling like these services are not accessible to them. And, you know, sometimes it's an issue of, yes, I know this service exists, but the waitlist or how do I access it? How do I get to this service that I desperately need? So having that family resource coordinator really gives you that hand to hold to walk you through the process and ensure that you're able to reach those services. And lastly, by providing it in the school, it reduces the stigma. It makes it much more safe and comfortable for families to access that support. So what services will be, we provide specifically in West Orange? These are just some ideas and we're going to be constantly having conversations to make sure that we're definitely meeting the needs of the West Orange school community. But just as a start, we're really looking to offer after-school programming and workshops for students and their families. But just as a start, we're really looking to offer after-school programming and workshops for students and their families. Um case management and integration with community programs. So this is that handholding I was talking about where we really work specifically with certain students. And their families to make sure we get them connected. Prevention and engagement programming. So really identifying what are ways that we can engage the students and their families within the school community and make sure that we're offering the supports that they need. We can offer psychoeducational groups for children, parents and school staff. So with that's um staff piece, really offering staff development workshops and consultations. So really working collaboratively with the teachers, with counselors, with child study team to be able to provide those supports for the students. And then classroom presentations and student programming. So we can go into the classrooms and offer supports. I know you mentioned, um Mr. Plata had mentioned that those new students coming into the district may be looking to offer a group specifically for them. How do we help you integrate to a new community, a new country, a new environment so that you really have that support as you're coming into the district? So there's a lot of different things that we can do and it'll really kind of come down to what's the biggest need, where do we start and where do we go from here? So our keys to success, it's designed to meet the local needs. So again, it's not a cookie cutter approach. We're really looking to meet the needs of the West Orange community. It's school and community collaboration. So we're not working on our own. We come together, we work together as a um as a united front so that we're all in this to support the students. Um because our employees, our twelve-month employees, we're able to offer before, during and after-school programming as well as summer programming for our students. We can offer a diversity of programming. So again, no cookie cutter approach. We really create the programming to fit the needs. There's flexibility, as I had mentioned, a variety of different ways, whether it's classroom presentations, groups, working individually with case management. Offering presentations to staff or students, we offer um our services in a variety of different ways. Um we had mentioned the continuum of services. So because of the large um organization that U B H C is, we have an access to all of the continuum of services available. And lastly, we're outcome-driven. So we want to make sure that we show you the success of our program. So we'll be assessing it throughout, um looking at ways to survey our. Our uh families and our and the staff in terms of the programming that we offer, working um specifically with students on offering um. Different ways of assessing that. So we're going to make sure that we're showing you at the end of the year. The the success that we're able to to have throughout the year.
Yeah, and and I'd I would like to just reiterate the partnership. It isn't um us hiring an outside agency that's coming in um and doing their own thing. Um it it is, we will be meeting uh at least every other week with uh Dr. Miller. Uh with Mr. Cano of regarding the programming, what we feel and also uh reaching out to the other aspects that we have. Within our our organization, within the public school system and making connections um and 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 building that that coalition together. So uh again, very excited about this opportunity, about this partnership. Uh and if there are any questions.
Is there a moment for Mr. Cano to?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Cano.
Okay, we listen. You're just on mute.
You just have to unmute yourself, Mr. Cano. There you go.
Yes, this is Mr. Cano. He will be working with us on a daily basis um to make sure this partnership flourishes. It's Mr. Cano.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andres Cano. Um. I'm coming from a background of middle-six uh children response. Um we have there a lot of families, so I'm hoping to bring over my experience and be able to be able to help the families in the community of West Orange.
Gracias, Mr. Cano. Bienvenido.
Gracias, muy amable igual.
Your plata. So so uh si tenemos pregunta hoy, we have questions. Um we're excited about this opportunity and. Uh we think we think it's a it's something that's needed and and we're we're definitely. I anticipate reaping great benefits from this partnership and the work that we can do together. Okay.
All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Robstein, if you have anything to begin with.
Uh yes, thank you so much. Um uh thank you very much for the presentation. This sounds uh like a badly needed program. So I'm I'm happy to learn more about this. Um first question that I had, I just wanted confirmation, is this one hundred percent funded by ES uh E S S E R?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's terrific. And the and the focus is exclusively on ESL and ELL populations. Is that correct also?
It's the the focus is on the yellow populations or families who who the student may not be in ELL, but. The the families and parents don't speak English. So we can, they they would need the same support from a bilingual, these bilingual services as our ELL population.
Got it. I understand. Um and um a question about the the duration of of time. I saw two different uh references in the documentation that I have. One of them referred to the twelve-month period that Dr. Millar mentioned. Uh and then the other was a a set of dates from September first through July or through June thirtieth. Um so I just wanted to to ask, does is it a twelve-month uh duration and are there two two additional months of services available?
I'm so sorry, our contracts go from July first to Sep- to June thirtieth, but we entered this um relationship um later on. So it it will be from September to June and at that time we'll reassess and see if you'd like to continue. So if we were to continue the contract, it would go from July first to June thirtieth the following year.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. Um and then the the last question that I had may be really a. A question to be answered later by Dr. Cascon or maybe Mr. Mendez. Is this sounds like something that many families in our community are could certainly use. And I would guess that. Uh in the general population as well, there may be many families who feel disconnected from resources and could use additional help. Uh I'm wondering if one resource is enough and uh and if there's a a greater need in the general population at all that could be considered at some point. Um so I'll I'll leave it there with my questions.
Mr. Rothstein, you know, we definitely uh see this as a a first step um in the direction of building a. A more uh robust, you know, and kind of cohesive uh support system. Um and finding ways to do that, um you know, creatively, whether it be through a combination of grant funding and local lines. Um but definitely something that we uh we we look to expand upon in future years and lessons learned through this year and our. Our maiden voyage, if you will, with uh with Rutgers, so for sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Trick scales, anything?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I can't hear anything else. So I won't hear the answers to my questions. Um, thank you for that presentation and um very excited about the prospect. Give us an example of other school districts that are currently using the program.
Sure.
Oh, but I can't hear what they're saying, so.
No, no.
I know, Mr. Trick scales, we we should, we should uh tech that you should be able to hear it on the on the bottom on your mute um button where the carrot is. Um, do you have select a speaker and are you just make sure that you're in uh the built-in internal speakers?
Okay.
Sorry for the interruption. Just want to make sure that.
Board president and tech support.
Thank you.
There's, I have one here too, if that's, I don't know.
Feels like I hear a dial-up modem and I don't know if that's just what I hear or if everyone else hears. Very funny. That's okay. We're gonna change over, okay? Okay, uh you're actually muted? Okay, I just still need uh. Jen, can I ask Miss Trick scales to unmute herself? Because she's not seeing my my prompt.
Can you unmute?
There we go. Okay, so now we, uh Mr. Trick scales, we're gonna have to change your microphone. So you have to go back down to the mute with the carrot. And where it says select a microphone, uh click built-in microphone. Or internal microphone, it may be listed as.
That probably says internal microphone.
Thanks, Mr. Albert. I can hear you. No, I can hear you. I can hear you, Terry.
Are we good?
I can hear you. Yep, I can hear you guys.
All this other stuff I have. Okay.
Are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the uh technical difficulties.
No problem. So as I had mentioned, we don't have a cookie cutter model. So when Mr. Plata came to us with um with the the vision for West Orange. We really created this approach. So other programs that we have, this is something new for us. The family resource coordinator specifically working with the ESL ELL community. This is something new that we're starting actually in two districts. Mr. Plata was referred to me through um a colleague in Franklin. So we're starting a very similar role with our Franklin program as well. Um most of our programs, what we have is a mental health clinician. So it's a licensed mental health professional. Who is able to see students right within the school building. Um and I had mentioned that continuity of care. So really, we create what model works for your school. We've brought clinicians into buildings. We've brought psychiatry into buildings. This is um as Dr. Kescon mentioned, our goal is that this will be the start of something uh more robust. So we can add and integrate additional resources as you guys see appropriate. So this will be um, you know, a launch for all of us with starting this specific programming. What we have had that's similar is in our South Orange program. We do have someone very similar. Their focus is more on prevention and programming for the students and providing services to the families as well. Not specific to the ESL um community, really for the whole district, but very similar idea. They do a lot of group programming. They do um case management, working specifically with individuals who need access to those resources. Working on developing programming for families and they collaborate with their clinicians in the building on doing um. Training and um different types of opportunities for the school staff. And with the program that we're presenting to you, one thing I forgot to mention. So by trade, I am a psychologist and as part of the program. You get me coming into the building as well and offering training for your school staff. So I'll be able to do some staff professional development, really working on building school capacity. You have a lot of great people in your building. And we're able to provide them with additional resources as well. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, it does. And and perhaps this one is more for Dr. Cascon. Are all of our ESL families being serviced or is it just at? One school, two?
So so Mr. We we envision Mr. Cunnell uh being based up at central office. Um and he will be, you know, he'll be deployed, um you know, um you kind of wherever. Uh wherever there's a need. Um obviously, you know, we have certain schools which have larger ESL and larger, you know, Spanish-speaking populations than others. So those would represent logical starting points. Um but the and also recognizing that, you know, um unless we can duplicate Mr. Cunnell. Um, you know, we're gonna have to be strategic in the way that we um, you know, that he's he's utilized. We have talked about the idea in some of our schools that have lower um percentages of Spanish-speaking populations that we would use Mr. Cunnell in more of like a consultant fashion. Uh where he would build capacity, but also then attend maybe ESL parent meetings, bilingual parent meetings at those schools. But his kind of neighborhood canvassing, if you will, um would be focused targeted initially um in those areas where we have the greatest needs.
Okay, thank you. And just one follow-up question. How will we evaluate the effectiveness of this program since it's new?
Yeah, so this was a conversation that we, you know, that Mr. Plata and I had and Dr. Miller as well. Um, you know, I think that, you know, finding a a measure um that's reliable and valid um is is tricky. Um I think it's going to require some thought, uh but we definitely foresee in the upcoming weeks identifying some sort of a baseline measure. Um and I'm thinking that it would probably reside more in the qualitative realm whereby we would maybe look at doing uh focus groups initially. Um or look at participation, percentage participation, um response rates on surveys, attendance at school events and things the like. But admittedly, we're still working through the instrumentation on that.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to that, I'll be creating um a mid-year report that I'll present to um Dr. Cascon and absolutely to the board. If you'd like to see it as well, which will include all of the um services that we were involved in up to that point. So any students that were referred, the demographic information, so you guys can see the types of people that are being referred to us. And then we'll continue to kind of play around with the best way to offer that outcome measure. Like I said, this is a very unique um program that we're developing. There's no specific pre and post data for each student because it's not really set up in that way. But we'll continue to keep you in the loop and offer um feedback as we go through the program.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Mark.
Um, well, the good thing is that Terry and Gary kind of covered my questions already. Um I was really just looking to see how we would measure success and how students would be eligible. It seems like that's all answered. So thank you for putting this together. I think it's going to benefit um many of our students, many of our families uh very well.
All right, Ms. Tony Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Um, thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited about this program and I think it's um long overdue. So I'm uh thank you for pulling this together. Um, a couple of my questions have already been answered. I'm wondering, is there an assessment period in the beginning where you'll be deciding like where you're going to focus most of your resources on? And um, you know, if if you can give me sort of more color or a scenario, sort of a scenario of how you see this playing out over the next year. Um and my third question is around, we're talking a lot about being in the building, but as you know, we are going to be virtual for at least the first six weeks or so. Six to eight weeks and I'm wondering how that's going to impact what you're planning to do. Thank you.
Do you want me to take that?
I'll take I'll take the last piece. You all can take everything leading up to that.
Okay, so I'm gonna answer and then whatever. I'm not sure if it's the last piece, the first piece. Um but as far as the considerations with us being virtual, uh that's almost one of the priorities that this position and and this program. Is hoping to address immediately at this point or or help address because obviously we have been working on communicating with these families and had. Have had some relative success with it. Uh but we want to really um, for example, have our parent academies. The plan is to have parent academies on a monthly basis. Uh so that's one clear measurement that we're looking to have one attendance with and effectiveness. Are parents able to uh come out of those those parent parent academies? And the initial ones, do they understand and are they able to navigate the Google meets and the platforms and all the the new tech tools that may be introduced um in September? Uh so that's one clear vision I have with uh Mr. Cunnell and the this the the small committee of of ESL teachers that I have that are going to be working with them. Um so that parent academy is one measurement. Um the I I lost the other parts of your question.
Unmute. Um, the other piece I wondered was how you're going to assess, because we do have a fairly sizable population. And how you're going to sort of deploy those resources that you have um initially. It sounds like certainly. Uh part of that is going to be the technology piece and the parent academies and getting our families up to speed on that. Are there other things?
You have something, yeah.
Absolutely. So we've actually started several programs since March. So at this point, I've become quite experienced at launching new programs virtually, um whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm not quite sure. But um some of what we would be able to offer immediately is um support groups for students. So those can be virtual, they can be offered via Zoom. Um we can get really creative. I know a large portion of the Latino population likes to use WhatsApp. So how can we integrate WhatsApp in terms of communicating with them, getting them on board, having them connect? So that's one thing we can do. In terms of assessing the needs, sometimes what we've done is we've come in and done a needs assessment with the staff. Where they help us identify where they see the biggest needs in the moment. Uh Mr. Plata had already talked. Mr. Plata had already talked about setting up some meetings for us with the counseling child study team, the Saks in the school. They're going to really be our biggest partners. So really partnering with them, help having them help us see what are the biggest needs in this moment right now so that we can start there. And you're right, Mr. Cunnell is one person. He's going to be with the district for 30 hours a week. So we want to be really mindful of utilizing the the time that we have in the the best possible way. So really doing that check in with the staff that's already on the ground. You know, counseling and child study teams, they're the ones that are working with those most at need families right now. So how can we target those families first, making sure that they're getting the resources that they need, those parent universities, school staff trainings, those are things that we could do on a larger scale, setting up groups, setting up classroom presentations. You know, teachers are going to be holding class virtually. So why can't we join that virtual classroom? There's a lot of creative ways that we could tap into the technology to make sure that we're meeting those needs.
Thank you.
And I just want to add one piece in closing. You know, relative to opportunities for in person. So, you know, I'll I'll call attention to an event that that Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, Mr. Plata was there, others. We did a great, you know, meet and greet with through the Hispanic Heritage Foundation at Washington School. There was a DJ. Everyone was socially distanced, masks when necessary, and it was a great event. I see absolutely no reason why we wouldn't be able to do things like that. We're in the process of purchasing 10 pop up tents for each of our schools, which with social distancing can accommodate up to 50 people. So we will be able to do onsite events, weather permitting, in the opening weeks of school and weather permitting. You know, until it gets too cold for us to do that. So I think there are absolutely the opportunities for good face to face interaction with our parents and with our students, not only for this, but for many things that we're doing in our schools. So just wanted to note that.
Now, I don't think I have any questions, but this is just, you know, so badly needed and so fantastic. You know, I think, you know, of use immediately, probably to roughly one in five West Orange families. And it's fantastic that we're able to do something about that. You know, I look forward to seeing a lot of success come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Kaskon, you have anything else tonight in your superintendent's report?
Well, first, before moving on to our next piece, I just want to again thank Senior Plata, Senior Cunnell, Dr. Millar for joining us for your hard work and putting this together. And I, you know, as a former ESL teacher and ESL supervisor myself, population is near and dear to me, and I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I'll be moving the three of you over to an attendee. So just don't touch your computer and you're going to see if something happened on your screen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving along to the final piece of tonight's superintendent report is an update on our school reopening plan. I thought before I'm going to be co-presenting with Mrs. Dendez. She's going to take the, you know, the first part of our presentation. But I just want to kind of provide some useful context for anyone who may not have been present for our meeting, our town hall meeting last week. So on July 20th, approximately five days after receiving the the template which we were to use for developing our school reopening plan, we presented a preliminary, a preliminary draft of a plan to the community that represented our best understanding of what we could implement at that time. I I think it's really important to understand that, you know, we weren't given a blueprint and then had time to build this out. We were developing the blueprint and building the house simultaneously. And when you're doing that, you know, you're you're learning as you go. You're going down one path in the labyrinth only to find that it's closed off and then having to turn back. I I think that at some point in time between July 20th and then ultimately when we presented at the town hall on, I believe it was the 6th. And it really came by virtue of receiving a lot of feedback from a lot of different stakeholders on both sides of the coin. But as I continue to look at the environmental conditions, in particular, I was thinking just in terms of weather and the early opening weeks of school, I didn't have a good answer to that. I didn't have a good answer to is it safe to put a seven year old in a second floor classroom that's 85 degrees and ask him to wear a mask for three or four hours and a staff member? I didn't have a good answer to that. There wasn't one. And I think that that's what started to turn my my mindset, even though at the time we had not been given the blessing of the governor to move in that direction. That regardless of that, I felt that it was the right direction to go. I felt that it was in the right, in the best interest at that time of our students and our staff, notwithstanding the challenges that I understand that that presents for learners at home and the challenges that it presents for parents if their children are home. And in reality, it was a recognition of what ultimately the governor did after we had actually taken that step. When he said, you know, if you are not able to meet the health and safety guidelines, you could open virtually. And that was essentially what we were purporting to our community. When we presented was we were identifying a number of questions. We called them kind of irreconcilable challenges at that time that represented very real health and safety concerns that we simply needed some additional time to thresh out before we felt comfortable bringing in large numbers of students and large numbers of staff members into our buildings. We outlined those in depth, subsequently posted that forum and the presentation online. And you may have noticed that on Friday, I posted really a lot of detail relative for the parent perspective and the community perspective on what those challenges were. You know, that announcement by the governor, I think, took the the conversation in a different direction. And I think it raised different types of questions in the minds of our community relative. Okay, so what exactly are those health and safety guidelines? Why aren't we able to meet them now? What do we need to do to meet them? How long is that going to take? And I'm considering also, how much is that going to cost? And so I'm going to delve into that a little bit more as a second part of the presentation. But I think it's important for Ms. Dendez to start, and we're not going to do an in depth, you know, slide by slide presentation as we did at the town hall. The presentation has been up. It's been posted. We explained it at the town hall and it has not changed substantially since that time that we've made some refinements to it. But Mrs. Dendez's presentation is going to be more about what can you expect on September 14th, right? Because we need to start the school year and we need to educate your children. And we need to be prepared to do that. And you need to be prepared to support your child in the best way you can for that as we enter into this transitional phase. So Mrs. Dendez's presentation is going to focus very much on that, on what the virtual fall will look like in the very beginning and how we're going to prepare for that. Ms. Dendez?
Good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you. And as we think about the fall 2020 virtual instruction, we did discuss that phase one will be fall virtual. I am going to just saw some of the scheduling slides that we had originally shown at our last presentation. But I'm going to begin first with professional development and the start of the school. So our plan for September 3rd is a full day of professional development for our teachers and our staff. It will be virtual. So that way our teachers can really begin to engage in all things fall virtual, in all things, what are we going to plan for? And how are we going to plan for the instruction? What does synchronous instruction look like? What are the expectations for teachers and students? How do we wrap ourselves around instructional materials and their distribution, et cetera? And then all of the technological pieces. On September 4th, there will be a half day of virtual PD. It is an optional day for staff. But here we will have all of our COVID training, our requirements. It will be on GCN. So our staff will be able to access that from wherever they are. September 8th through 11th, again, we will continue with all of the professional development that we really need in order to successfully begin. Our virtual impairments can begin for the fall virtual classes to start on September 14th. In preschool, we went over the schedule. So I just want to just really comment here for our schedule that this is a framework. What we're saying here is from 9:00 to 12:00 PM during this block of time, what parents can expect is for there to be programming, there to be content or instructional delivery. There are a list of the topics that will be covered or the instructional strategies and content that will be addressed during this time to include the afternoon for PD and Fridays for teacher planning. Similarly, for the elementary, we see that this block of time is what is going to be dedicated to the instruction. However, when we're thinking about the framework versus the schedule, I think that's where the conversation really is. And one of our most frequently asked questions was have we considered screen time, right? So that was probably one of the greater questions that we received from parents. What about screen time? What about what's developmentally appropriate? Are we going to be considering the age of our kindergarten students, of our preschool students? It seems as though we have these long blocks of time where students are expected to sit for an hour plus per content area. So again, what the framework communicates to parents and to teachers is during this block of time, parents should plan to set that aside for their students to be given to the academic, the social emotional learning. However, in that time, parents can expect to receive a detailed schedule at the beginning of the year, which will then say here is where we will be learning ELA from this time to this time embedded. There will be digital recess. There will be common breaks. There will be social emotional learning. Parents can expect to see direct teacher interaction. So it would be the teacher in a Google Meet with the students providing the one on one instruction versus setting up more videos, right? Or go to Google Classroom to download something. That's not our intention. I think that's where the big difference will be. We will see an integration of reading from print, drawing, art projects, music, dance, constructed playtime. So the teacher may be facilitating playtime, right? They may be on the screen with the student to say, we're going to approach the content this way. And then students will have time to engage with their print, engage with their play, engage with that at the lower level. So we are considering developmentally appropriate and engaging blocks of time for the student. It won't be screen time as we we saw in in our March through June implementation. And there will be frequent and appropriate breaks for dedicated movement activities, et cetera. So that's really as we're thinking about the schedule, as we're thinking about breaks, as we're thinking about long commitments to sitting down to learn our instruction. At the middle school, we do have our blocks. These are more constructed, as is the high school. So the students can expect to be in their classes from the during these periods that are denoted here in the schedule. The teachers, however, again, in addition to presenting content through direct instruction, as as we were talking this evening, they will be doing the same using their resources, their smart boards, their different materials in their classroom environment, et cetera. But there will be breaks integrated. There will be use of whether it's their instructional materials and other items at home, right? We will be discussing all of those different types of strategies with our families as we go through orientation. Another expectation that parents can see or parents can expect will be that when we begin the virtual instruction, parents alongside students will receive some type of training, right? And it will be around how to create your workspace, how to set up a dedicated place at home where you're studying. What does that look like? Instructional materials, our teachers at the very beginning on September 3rd are going to be identifying the instructional materials that need to go home. We will send home to parents a distribution schedule for parents to know when to come to the school to pick up those instructional materials, whether there be textbooks or workbooks or maybe art supplies or or other items, calculators, right? Things that the students will need in order to be productive and be able to engage in the instruction. So we will send a calendar of the distribution times and when parents can expect to pick those up. All right. Another thing parents can expect is during these independent times, the PM schedule or the Friday times, teachers may identify certain students that will need additional support. Students may self identify and say, I need additional support. Parents may say, my child needs additional support. So those PM hours and those Friday hours will be dedicated to providing that for the students that may be at Google Meet where a teacher reaches out to those students, may reach out to a parent to have a face to face meeting virtually and provide the support that's needed for the student. Okay. The high school schedule is similar. It's set up in the blocks and it's the same plan. Our 18 to 21 program, again, this is the block of time. We do not expect the students in this program to be seated at their desks, right? For extended periods of time, there will be again, all of the integrations, the breaks and the digital recess as well. And then I think that brings us to our next most frequently asked question. Will instruction be delivered from the classroom or from home? And so then Dr. Kaskon is going to speak to us about about our thinking.
Thank you, Ms. Dendez. I just want to go back to the slide that, you know, and you don't have to actually reverse it. I mean, just, I'm going to reference it in my comments for that first week of school. You know, that 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 first week for teachers rather, that that eighth to the 11th. We're envisioning that to be an extremely busy and and labor intensive week from from an operational standpoint. Not only will we be, you know, put doing, following an aggressive professional development schedule to get our teachers fully prepared to begin the virtual instruction. But we also know that we have to do a couple of things. We, as Ms. Dendez referenced, we need to ensure that we're creating pickups for for students and parents to get materials. We also envision doing some onsite orientations. That's when we're planning on doing our kindergarten orientation, our seventh grade orientation, our ninth grade orientation whereby we'll be bringing in smaller groups in staggered fashions over the course of the day. The principals are working on those schedules and those details. So that's going to be a really important week. So we all, both students, parents and staff are all getting the vital time they need so that when we launch on the 14th, it's not helter skelter. And people can be as comfortable as possible. So I just wanted to mention that. But let me talk a little bit about these these health and safety considerations. And I mentioned a number of them in, we mentioned a number in the town hall. And I mentioned a number of them in my correspondence that I put out over the weekend on social media and then also on our district website. So let's talk about equipment first. And I just want to kind of review, in other words, do we have the the necessary PPE and supplies in order to operate our buildings according to the protocol? And so I just want to kind of take you through some of these things. So we we do, in fact, as far as PPE, we have received to date our N95 masks for nurses and face shields. We have ordered clear mouth face masks, disposal isolation gowns, scrubs, shoe covers, gloves and thermometers. Those were ordered in late July. None of those have come in yet. We will fought, we have followed up with the vendor to obtain an estimated arrival date. My sense of it is that it is likely that we will have those items by the first week of school, but not necessarily guaranteed. We have identified the need for desk barriers in certain cases. It's not our it's not our plan to purchase desk barriers for every desk because we are utilizing social distance of six feet in our classrooms. And therefore, we do not believe that that desk dividers are necessary. However, with special services and in certain cases where testing or one on one assistance, those may be necessary. The the estimated deliveries between two or three weeks on those that we have a quote in hand on that because that's something we've kind of identified later in our planning. It's not something that we necessarily foresaw needing initially, but we've identified that as we finalize the plan. We have placed hundreds of thousands of dollars of orders for hand sanitizer and alcohol based wipes. All of those have come in, have been received. It is a massive amount of freight and now needs to be divvied up, distributed, dispersed into the schools, dispersed into the classrooms. But we are optimistic that that distribution could happen in time for the opening of school for staff and or students. We have processed our orders for thermal scanners. We currently have 55 that we've received. 33 additional units are due in on 8/21 and 110 units are due on 8/31. And those would be what we would install in our entryways to the schools. We would need multiple units and multiple entry points, in particular at the high school, where we would envision having up to where we would envision having up to 10 units per entry point so that we could be screening approximately 30 students per minute. But of course, we don't really know logistically how that will work in terms of time. But we would be working on really kind of trialing that and piloting to understand what that time would be and understanding how that might impact on transportation routes. But we should have all of the thermal scanners in. And we've gone with a cheaper unit as opposed to the expensive large units. We're going with the units about $100 apiece, which has enabled us to order a significant number. We ordered the electrostatic sprayers from the classroom on May 18th. To date, we have not received them. We, the estimated date of delivery would be the end of September. Now, I did ask Mr. Zigi about our capacity in the interim. And we are using basically the equivalent of like a garden sprayer for that, which is equally as effective, but not as, not as, not as quick. It does not enable the custodians to cover as much ground as they can with the electrostatic sprayers, which raises question marks about, you know, whether or not we can sanitize our buildings quickly enough overnight when populated with large numbers of students. So from a PPE standpoint, I think the fact is, is that most, if not all, of our equipment will be in for the start of the school year, received most likely, and could be distributed. So that is not as much of a stumbling block as originally thought. But again, there's also the distribution, there's the installation, there's the trialing, there's the training. But still, I wouldn't imagine that that would need any more than two weeks or so after receipt to make sure that we had deployed, installed, trained and were ready to use. The, there's the training piece, right? So if we're going to ask staff members to come in and be adequately trained on what that means to them, in other words, what we're going to ask them to do when they come in, what protocols they need to follow. And then additionally to that, for what protocols need to be followed when students are coming in the building, that's something where we can do that contemporaneously with the staff member coming in. I would argue that there is some advanced preparation and training that we would need to give the teachers ahead of that virtually so that they understood exactly what the expectations were when they came onboard. Again, not expecting that that would take a lot of time, but I do think that that has to be provided to teachers before they're asked to come into the buildings, that they understand exactly what the expectations are and that we have an opportunity to ensure that we've distributed all the necessary PPE to them. The largest issue that we face now, and I think that the governor's declaration kind of put it squarely on the radar when it speaks specifically to the idea of ventilation in our buildings, right? And so we, you know, I as the superintendent, the board of education, needs to be able to say confidently that deficiencies in our heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems do not represent a hazard to our staff and students, of course. We have to be able to confidently say that. So just to talk to you a little bit about the process that we're following. We have engaged in discussion with our architects of record, engineers of record. We are fortunate that our district went through a comprehensive HVAC evaluation down to the classroom space. So we don't need to go through a lengthy process of evaluation. Our architects can tell us exactly where our deficiencies exist presently and what kind of remediation efforts would be needed in order to get our ventilation systems up to snuff, if you will, to the point where we, I as the superintendent, we as the board could confidently say, we're comfortable with what we have to offer. And I want to share a little bit of information with you on that because I think there are various aspects to it. So we have approximately 80 spaces in our school district that are not ventilated. These spaces would require, in the short term, the most expeditious solution would be to place a relatively high-cost mobile ionization unit in that space. That's not a $300 unit. That's more like a $2,000 unit. And that's a unit that would, what that would do is, is it coagulates microscopic molecules, including viral molecules, into a larger bundle, if you will, thereby making them more apt to be removed by the filtration system from the atmosphere, from the air in the room. That's what we would do with those. In our buildings that have rooftop units, this would be slightly easier because the, an ionization mechanism, if you will, would be installed directly to the rooftop unit. And therefore, once you have eight of those installed, then that building would be, the air quality would be such that we would be comfortable with that. In our buildings with UNIVENTS, those systems would need to be installed on each individual UNIVENT in each individual room. Now, the irony of it on the front end of this is that, believe it or not, our most updated facility, Liberty Middle School, because it has a centralized HVAC system, actually presents a greater risk to folks who are in the building at that time because there's intermingling of air between classrooms via the ductwork. So the possibility, albeit relatively slight, that a viral molecule could actually move from one classroom to the next exists. In an older building, like for example Roosevelt, where our ventilation systems are confined to one classroom, in essence, that classroom is a confined system, a confined ventilation system. That staff member in that classroom is actually at less risk than a staff member who's actually in, hey, properly ventilated because the air is exchanging between classrooms. Of course, once we add students to the mix, then the, you know, then the risk becomes relatively even between both. Now, at Monday's public meeting, it was originally advertised as a public policy work session. We did advertise for personnel. But we are asking our architects to come to that meeting on Monday and provide us with a more detailed analysis and presentation on what the remediation efforts would be, what the prospective cost would be for that and what the timeline within which that work can be completed. I can tell you in our preliminary conversations with them today, I was not, I was not, you know, I didn't fall over when they told, I might have fallen over when they mentioned the cost, but I didn't fall over when they mentioned the timeline. It's not, in spite of what it sounds like, it's not as a prolonged work timeline as one might think. Although the likelihood that all that work could be done in advance of the original November 9th deadline is not likely. If we were to do this, we would likely front-load the project with our elementary schools in order to get our elementary schools up and online sooner. But the reality of it is, is that there exist real ventilation issues, which we really feel that we would need to remediate in order to be in align with the most recent declaration for the governor and the way he's framed out this issue. And so that's kind of an update. I know that there was an interest in the community to understand in greater detail where we were disaligned from the health and safety guidelines, how we were intending to rectify that and what the prospective timeline would be for us to feel that we could rectify those disconnects where they exist. That is my report, our report, Mr. President.
Alright. So questions from the board? Mr. Rothstein?
Thank you. I'm sorry, bear with me one second here. I've got notes written all over the place. I think, actually, could you come back to me, Mr. Alper, because my notes-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Scales?
Okay, did we, I'm sorry, did you plug in a, either got to bring your headset down off of your head? And then, or we have to move the microphone down? But we still have to, because we didn't have you plugged in, we have to go back down again and change your microphone. On the bottom of the screen to the left where it says mute, there's a little carrot. Sorry. I'll just take actually this opportunity to let the attendees know that there will be time for public comment and we ask at that time that you raise your hand, but not before. So you just go down to the bottom left, Mr. Scales, there's a carrot there and you just kind of select your microphone? And also just make sure that your plug is plugged in completely into the jacket. There we are.
Oh, you got me?
I got you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. There you go.
Okay. Alrighty. So where was I? Okay. Oh, I was just going to say that this is so comprehensive, so detailed. I've had occasion to look at some other district plans and our parents and stakeholders should be really pleased that our administration has gone to the length that they have with the various committees. Dr. Cascon, as we go back and talk about the units for the individual classrooms.
Spam.
Oh, okay. How many are we talking about where we'd be able to put in at least a half of, half a class of students?
Yeah, I mean, that's, so we have, you know, about, there are about 80 to 100 spaces that would absolutely need them. You know, that presently do not have any ventilation system whatsoever. Now, an alternative approach could be to purchase a number of these for each school, thus putting into circulation, let's call it 10 classrooms in each school, and being able to begin onsite sooner. That is a possibility if ultimately, once we see from the architects, whether it be cost or whether it be timeline, is not adequate, is not acceptable, if you will. Then we can look, go in another direction and purchase units for each school and this way we can begin some onsite instruction sooner. I will tell you that the number of students we'll be able to bring in on a daily basis would be less than we originally proposed through the hybrid model.
Oh, few.
Well, I mean, because, you know, if we wanted more, if we wanted the same amount, then we would have to, you know, purchase a unit for just about every classroom space in the school. You know, if we were going to have the units serve as the remediative step and not do the ionization retrofitting to the UNIVENTS and we were going just simply with those units, then we'd have to buy one for each classroom in order to make it habitable for students and staff.
Okay. Looking at the middle school schedule, it looks as if the students are going for the first four blocks with just five minutes in between. Would it be possible to give them a longer break after the first two blocks? Is that a consideration?
That is absolutely a consideration. It's something that we're talking about reconsidering the breaks now that we're going to be in virtual. When the breaks were established, that was for transition time in hallway. So we'll now relearn that.
And what about the start time for the high school? Do they still have to start so early? 7:30?
Mr. Mendez, you want me to take that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So yes, so thank you, Mr. Scales, for that question. And thank you to folks, including students, perhaps most notably students who have reached out to me and petitioned me to change the start time of the school. I just want to kind of provide you with some considerations that are in my mind as I consider that, as I think about that as a possibility. You know, I think one is, is that if we start the school day later, okay? Then, you know, that then moves into our afternoon time. Time which it is our intention to use for both staff development and also the time which we would envision bringing students in for kind of targeted supports during this virtual fall. Remember, we've always talked about the idea that, you know, our buildings will remain open, as I call services hubs, where we can bring students in as needed for a variety of different things. And we, our intention would be to do that in the afternoon hour. So it would cut into that time that our staff and our buildings were able to do that. I think the other thing is that our goal, our aspiration is to ultimately, at some point in time, get back into the buildings. And we know when we do that, that a delayed schedule will not work. We will then have to switch back to the original schedule, adjust all of our communications because we know that a couple of the roadblocks to this schedule going to 7:30 is if our high school students start later, our elementary students start earlier. And when we talk about putting five-year-olds on a bus stop in the dark versus a high school student on the bus stop in the dark, the question becomes, who would we rather have waiting out at a dark bus stop? A five-year-old or a high school student? So I think that's, I would argue, is sort of an irreconcilable challenge with that. Now, athletics is, may ultimately not necessarily be an issue, but that's another part of it, which is that, you know, our athletic schedules start when they start. So if we start our school day later and it stays the same length, then that means that any of our after-school activities, including athletics, then need to be pushed later. And that obviously requires the buy-in of the NJSSIIA and our conference. Those become kind of two critical factors there. I think another piece is, you know, what we talked about was the idea of establishing some degree of normalcy. Now, it may not necessarily be a normalcy people like, but a normalcy whereby we're having students return back to some level of discipline and structure so that, you know, it's not like last year where, you know, like my own kids, they could, you know, they could get up whenever and still easily get the work done, you know, by midnight of that night, right? We want to bring more of a workday mindset to the day-to-day. And a final piece is that I absolutely identify and empathize with the life of a high school student. I've said it time and time again recently, over the course of my career. You know, go to school all day, an after-school activity, maybe a job, home for three or four hours of homework, studying for tests and boom, back up. But that's not the reality this year. When you look at the schedule, the reality it is, is that for all practical purposes, you know, their onsite, you know, their synchronous instructional day ends relatively early. The homework load is not going to be as great as it's been in the past and the after-school commitments are going to be less than they will, than they've been in the past. You know, I think, you know, having good sleep habits, you know, being disciplined about going to bed and at a reasonable time, I think is something that our students are going to do. And be honest with themselves, right? Because in as much as I identify, I also have three teenagers, teenagers myself. And I know there are many nights when I go into their room, when I've been up late working and there's the TikTok and the this, that and the other thing going on, when in fact they, and they should be asleep. And the phone, my case, was taken away until, you know, they can show better judgment. But so I, those, you know, it's not as if I don't identify with it, but I think that it raises challenges and question marks, both in the here and now and also moving forward if we have to switch back.
Okay, I accept that because it's not permanent. So I can see where it would be another big transition. So I asked the same question then about their schedule, the high school schedule. They're going from 7:30 until 12. I don't know if there's study halls and there are something, but other than those breaks, might they get a longer break somewhere in the day? So I guess that's Mr. Mendez.
Yes, as we're looking at that, we're looking at the consideration for breaks in the schedule and where they would appropriately fit, 6 through 12.
Okay, great. Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Rothstein, did you catch up?
I'm a little better organized now, thank you for that. First thing was really more a comment than a question. The sections of the report that I have that deal with the professional development before reopening, just so impressive and comprehensive and really instills a great deal of confidence. So my gratitude to the teams that have put that together and put all the thought into it. And then a couple of questions that I fear I'm going to embarrass myself, they may have been answered already. Office hours, I assume that what that means on the schedule is that's a time when students can reach out to their teachers for support. Okay, terrific, as opposed to the proactive teachers reaching out to the students who they think need support. Okay, great. Lockers, students are not going to have access to lockers at schools, is that correct? Or is that not decided yet?
I think in the fall virtual, we won't, students won't be in the building- I, I think in the fall virtual, we won't, students won't be in the buildings, so then no, that they wouldn't have access to lockers for the fall. In the hybrid, the high school has designated a part of their health and, and safety protocols, how lockers can and cannot be used. I think, I think we're, we're going to have to wait until we get a little closer to November to see what this actually looks like. We've given ourselves a soft date of October sixteenth through the nineteenth, right in there, to start pivoting, to start training for the hybrid model, whether it be live streaming or those one-way hallways, right? And all of those protocols as we're coming in with temperature checks. So if we're thinking hybrid for on or about November ninth, around the sixteenth through the nineteenth of October, that's when you'll see us start to pick back up the PD modules and, and push full force into a new model.
Okay. Dr. Kascón, back to a question about, about the ventilation and filters on, on the, in classroom units. Is there any way that the, that those can be sanitized, or is there a plan to replace them regularly, or what is the schedule for that?
Yeah, so I've been been getting an education on, on MERV filters and things of that nature. So let me tell you about our current protocol is. We replace our filters four times a year. Presently, we, Mr. Rothstein, can I just ask you to mute your microphone? That's okay, I'm just getting some feedback.
Yes, if, if, anyone in that room should be muting their mic.
And we use, I believe, a MERV four, which is, is, and what's been recommended is either as high as a MERV seventeen, and in speaking with our architects and engineers, they recommend at least a MERV thirteen. And those would need to be replaced monthly. And the challenge with those, and first I'll tell you that the MERV filters do not filter out the, the viral particles. They just do a much better job of, of cleaning and purifying the air of everything else. So it eliminates any other, any other respiratory irritants that might be in the room, but it absolutely does not filter out a microscopic viral particle. One of the additional challenges that we have with applying MERV seventeen or even MERV thirteen filters to our units is that our units are old. The, the thrust, if you will, that's necessary for the motor to push the air through a filter of that density would, in most cases, overtax the older motors of our units, and we might end up with units that end up burning out and not being able to use. So it's not even really feasible for us, and even if it were, we'd be talking about several hundred thousand dollars for the year to be able to replace that many MERV seventeen or thirteen filters on a monthly basis.
Thank you so much. And last question, which also may be a little bit out of left field, but imagining a scenario. Again, if this is a little bit ahead of where planning is right now, please just let me know, but imagining a scenario where, where in the hybrid model, students are in the classroom, the teacher isn't able to, to make it into school due to illness or whatever reason, and a substitute teacher is not available. Is there planning in progress right now for what to do with those students, how to supervise them, how they'll be instructed, whether they need to go home?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, Mr. Rothstein. We've discussed that from various angles. So first, I think an advantage that we have being virtual first in the fall and then moving into a hybrid model is that all teachers, when planning generally in a normal day, plan for subplans, right? They plan for five days or a week's worth of substitute plans, and when a substitute comes into a building, they submit those subplans to the substitute to take over the instruction. An advantage that we have is instead of having traditional subplans, we could potentially, and we're exploring this greater, is create virtual lessons for a week of instruction where then the student can go right to their Google Classroom and obtain their lesson. This would help us, I think, greatly because we would not need to worry about a sub, train the sub, right? The student, if the teacher is out on a day, the subplans, if you will, the virtual lesson is already in their Google Classroom. The message would read, you know, your teacher is absent today, this is your assignment, or this is your work. And, but though we can plan for those five days of virtual instruction to still be meaningful, not just, right, a written assignment, but still have content moving. So that would be for the students who would be in virtually. For those who are in person, what we're considering and exploring is that if there is a teacher who's out, we would have an area that is pre-identified for students to go in a type of study hall where we could continue to distant socially. Students could report to this larger space, which would be a study hall with their Chromebook, and they would go on and access that subplan, right, that teacher's plans in their Google Classroom, again, a meaningful, engaging way to instruct. By no means are we suggesting that we would not have substitutes and that we would not be using them, but I think we need to plan in larger number. There may be instances where we have more absences than normal, especially as we enter flu season and just cold season, and, and people are being extra cautious and maybe not coming in just to monitor their, their own health. And I think that would be a great way to offset some of that. So that's right now where our thinking is.
All right, that's terrific. Thank you so much. I, I don't have any more questions.
All right. Ms. Merklinger.
Thanks. So I think I, you know, it's, it's not a hidden secret. I was a little disappointed when I saw the plans because I was hoping that we would be able to go back onsite and do the hybrid model. Although I definitely appreciate the thoroughness and the diligence that was put into the plan, and I, and I do see a lot of what was put into it and what was behind it. But I do have questions about what was originally presented versus what we're, where we're at now. So the first plan, we had surveyed parents, and seventy percent of the parents in our community wanted or opted for the hybrid model. I was wondering, did we survey the parents to find out if that was still consistent? I know it's, you know, we do, are offering the, the virtual model, but and that's our plan right now, but I'm just wondering, if seventy percent of our community still wants their students onsite, how do we accommodate that challenge? I know we're, we have had some camps here at the high school, we've had camps, where we were put implementing the daycares. So I think there's just some questions from the parent community. I've heard from a lot of teachers, a lot of parent professionals, a lot of parents, actually a lot of students who want to be back in the building and who would have preferred to have the hybrid model. So I'm just trying to understand, wrap my hands around, I understand the ventilation piece and the space, but I'm just trying to understand how we would, you know, what that change involved, and if it was specifically just the hot, the, the ventilation piece. But on top of that, I'm also starting to hear a lot of parents have asked, excuse me. Knowing that my son is in a private school that is going back to school full-time onsite, you know, how are at least other school districts able to do so? They have similar ventilation issues, they have similar structure, you know, buildings are old. And so I think, you know, there's waiting lists at seventeen schools in this area, private schools in this area. And so I'm wondering if our West Orange district has been affected by that, because if students are being withdrawn to, you know, parents are seeing the cost for daycare for these pods that are popping up within the community, the cost of, you know, whatever additional, you know, tutors, things like that, that it's just more cost-effective to pull their students out of the West Orange district and put them into private schools. So I'm wondering if we've seen a decline in enrollment, and in fact, would that then affect the number of students that could be allowed to go back into our school buildings? If seventy percent still wanted that hybrid model, and now we have less students in the community going to our schools, it would seem, one, we have a less need for classrooms, and maybe potentially, we would be able to go onsite sooner. So I'm just wondering if that, that's something that's been considered.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Merklinger. Just, just kind of some, some, some thoughts. You know, when, when we, when we started this, this process, and even prior to even receiving the Roadback Guidance from the state, we had been, you know, kind of speculating and kind of just doing some advanced thinking. You know, understanding, we kind of figured, yeah, all right, the social distancing, that'll be in place, and we had a few pieces which we were pretty sure were going to be like central, central components of the Roadback Guidance. And so we, we had a lot of conversation before we actually got to that, and I got to be honest with you. I, I had doubts, concerns relative to the feasibility of it, just by virtue of all the factors. But on June twenty-sixth, at, at approximately six PM, we received the, the, the book from the State Department of Education, and we took that charge seriously. And we knew that, not the least of which because of the survey with which we'd been provided, the data that we have been provided by our community knew that a large percentage of our community wanted and intended to send their kids back to school. So we got to work, like every other school district in the state. We got to work leveraging the full capacity of our team, of partners, in, in looking at this thing, up-downs, up, ups, upwards, downwards, and sideways to try and make it work. And we came to a board meeting on July twentieth and presented the community with what at that time was a draft. It was a draft framework of a model that was really just in its preliminary stages. I think what you, what you're seeing now is what I saw three weeks ago, which was something that, based upon the limitations and, and the various factors that we've discussed, I was really questioning the feasibility of when the rubber met the road at the beginning of September, that we'd actually be able to do it. And when presented with the prospect of either, you know, making the number of people very unhappy by virtue of not being able to offer them onsite instruction from the onset, or making everybody unhappy with what I could only foresee to be, at best, an extremely disorganized, disoriented, chaotic first day at school for people, that, and on top of that, might have potentially been unsafe to either children or students. I saw no way forward other than to make a shift. It was a shift that was made only by a very small number of other school districts in the state. It was a shift that, quite frankly, I think demonstrated by virtue of the, the points we were making, the governor to say, I understand that what I'm asking school districts to do is not, in all cases, safe. And I think what you're seeing now, and I just saw another one, which was from Long Branch Public Schools, Dr. Michael Salvatore, Superintendent of the Year, two years ago, just reversed, just one virtual. Why? Because, because when it comes down to it, there are factors that are, that, that, that under, under, undercut the, the, the practicality of this. And so, most importantly, and I understand, and I, and I, and I apologize for that. I understand that that, that that epiphany, if you will, happened in my own head. It was not an epiphany that I shared at that time, because I was working to understand the degree to which the board would support that. I was understanding the degree to which we, how we were going to message that, and yes, it did not really become unveiled until we had that town hall panel discussion. But I think what you're seeing, and I, and I can share this with you, Mrs. Merklinger, sitting in superintendent's roundtables, the wheels are still spinning. They're still spinning. And, and, and all that's doing is removing value, even more valuable time away from how are we actually going to make this virtual piece work? Because we knew, whether we did hybrid or virtual, we had to have a really good virtual piece. And the, and the misfortune of this is that we've spent the last six weeks, you know, trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, as opposed to really focusing, which now we're doing aggressively, on how we can offer the best possible virtual experience to reconcile the safety and health challenges and disconnects that exist, and make sure that when we do bring students and staff to buildings, we can confidently say that they are safe for kids and students to come to. But I recognize, I understand that that is a bitter, bitter pill, and it absolutely doesn't represent anywhere near the ideal. Final few points, Mrs. Merklinger, and then I'll, I'll, I'll close. Is, you know, and I've, I've gotten a lot of great emails, I've responded to a lot of emails from parents, and I, and I say, you know, what would, what would lend us to overlook the vast disconnects that exist right now, a- and when we think about going back to school? We hear the points made about the fact that, you know, that occupancy for indoor gatherings is at twenty-five percent, no more than twenty-five people, and yet, schools are exempted from that. And, and we, and we, we don't, we hear it, but, but we don't process it, because we know how important it is for our kids to be in school, and we want them in school, so much so that we overlook these gaping disconnects that exist in the fact that elsewhere in our society, and much to our chagrin and dismay, our society is not open back up. And yet somehow, the expectation is that we're going to open schools up, and there's a disconnect there, and we overlook it because we really want our kids back at school. But I would suggest that we can overlook that disconnect, and we, and we certainly should not, I would argue, be critical of, of, of folks who, who want to ensure that there's, that, that there's, their health and their safety is, 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 is not guaranteed, because there are no guarantees, but guaranteed to the greatest extent possible. And that's really all I'm suggesting, is that as a superintendent, as the CEO of this organization, representing the board, that I need to be able to confidently say that I have faith in our procedures and protocols, which I will, and that the workplace is safe for the return of our employees. I have to feel one hundred percent confident in that statement before I'm comfortable bringing people back in large numbers. Final point. We have always talked about using our buildings, right? Because we know that the, that the distancing that, that occurred last year, where we couldn't have access to any kids, and the kids couldn't have access to us, the teachers, and so on and so forth, that we can still do that. We can provide for those needs. Let me talk to our special needs parents a bit, because I know that, that for you, you're concerned, and I understand. And I think Mrs. DeMendes put this in her presentation, and I think this is the focus, is let's, let's not focus on the safest way to bring our stu-, our kids back into school, but let's focus on the safest way to educate our kids. So I, I challenge parents to challenge child study teams to say, okay, okay. All right, so my child can't be in school every day. Look, the goals and objectives remain, right? And the school district's obligation to, to ensure that those goals and objectives are met remains. So if it's not going to happen with my child coming into school every day, how's it going to happen? That needs to be an inclusive collaborative conversation, win-win conversation at the child study team meeting, to understand what we can do to meet those goals and objectives if we can't do it virtually. And, but I understand, believe me, I understand as a parent of three children, public school children, I, I understand it as a father, as well as a superintendent.
Well, thank you. You know, definitely, I don't want to, I definitely do not want to take away from anyone who I certainly understand health conditions, health concerns, health risks. On the flip side, I don't think we should, I, you know, hold it against anyone that does want to see their children go to school, and I think those parents in this community, I don't know if they feel their voice has necessarily been heard all the time with that, but I certainly understand where you're coming from, and I think that, you know, it's a valid point, and I, you know, it's, it's an entire district of seven thousand students, so I understand that. And that being said, and with this plan, you know, I'm one of those folks who says, okay, well, this is the decision, so let's move forward, how are we going to make it better and execute it perfectly? So I think that brings me to the question of, and you just talked about special, uh, special education.
Can I interrupt you for one second? You actually had two questions, which I didn't answer, I got so caught up. I was rolling there. So, private schools. I have seen come through my inbox one, one private school disenrollment. There may be more, but I've only had one that's, that's come across my desk to date. I had a very illuminating visit to the JCC on Friday, and Mrs. Gorgon and I went there to visit. I had never been to the facility. Magnificent facility, in fact, beautiful. You know, and they are going to be offering all-day care programs there. And I said, well, we know, are you, you know, you running your preschool? Yep, all day, every day. I said, hi, you know, cap in classes at ten, and, you know, fully modernized HVAC system. There you go. Like, and so if we could cap our, our classes at ten, and I think when you look at a lot of private schools, you know, they're able to limit their, their class sizes. They better be careful how many students they admit. They might have to do a hybrid model if they admit too many, because it's, it's, in fact, their small class size that enables them to actually do an all-day model, in some ways. I mean, I think those are two considerations. So I know you had asked me those questions, Mrs. Merklinger, and I just wanted to make sure I addressed them.
Oh, thank you. Um, you know, and, and with that, and I certainly understand that, I think, you know, some of the, the thoughts and- I think, you know, some of the, the thoughts and, and some of the things that have been brought to my attention with going forward with, with this model and doing virtual and then going hybrid, I think there's a real concern from parents who, and, and this is nothing against teachers. Everyone was in, you know, this, this pivot mode when we went virtual and everything kind of shut down and this state shut down. But I think there's still that hesitancy of how robust is the curriculum going to be? And how engaged are students going to be with their teachers? You know, is the work gonna be really, there was mentioned in a previous Board of Ed meeting about, you know, lessening some of the requirements or, and I think that caused some parents to kind of go, whoa, wait a second, why are we going to not have the same standards that we've had previously of our students? And, you know, we're starting to, we're, we're trending in a positive direction for graduation rates. So I think there's some real concern if we're not gonna be able to, or that will we be able to? And will our teachers be able to provide the students virtually with a robust curriculum that engages them, teaches them where they are actually learning versus, you know, going to, I don't know, you know, a YouTube video, right? That's what, you know, you hear all the time. And I, by all means, do not think that our teachers would, are intentionally doing that. I think it was an adjustment and everyone was, you know, adjusting to that virtual teaching. But I think now that we've had time, we've had all this time since March and June till, until now, and, and with the PD plan, it looks like. But how do we get our, how do we make our parents feel comfortable with what's planned for the first day of school?
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, and it's, you know, it's interesting, Mrs. Merklinger, because when this first started, I remember reading an article, and it, it basically was asserting that, that, you know, that due to this pandemic, we could be looking at a lost generation academically. Now, I thought that that was a bit melodramatic at the time, but I think that as the further we go along in this, I think we recognize that, 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 you know, the idea of the extent to which our kids are sliding, right? I have an interesting conversation today, this idea of like there are states where because the nature of their, their cases, they are open, right? And so kids that are, say, from Wyoming, that's an example, you know, are gonna be at an advantage against kids who are from New York and New Jersey because our cases are such that we're still where we are. So I, I think we're starting to think more along those lines. I mean, I've even heard people talking about a 13th year and things of that nature, you know? So I, I think that that's real. You know, the only thing I can say is, is that, you know, that we, we will need to be held highly accountable for the quality of what we deliver. Now, I think that, I think that, that our teachers, I, I think that they are up for it. I think they're ready for this because I think they recognize, I think there was a very big learning curve for them last year. I think there was a big learning curve for us as an organization saying, you know, what do we need to do to really better prepare teachers to do this? And I'll be honest with you, I mean, we, we could have used the entire summer with people in all the time, but, you know, obviously that's not an option. I mean, we are, we have a really robust week planned for that first week, but make no mistake about it, we gotta accomplish an awful lot in a week and, you know, we're not gonna be masters right off the bat, but it's going to be much better right off the bat than it was just by virtue of the, the direct interaction with students that are, that's happening on a scheduled basis, you know, mirroring the school day. But you're absolutely right, and I've said that before, which is, we expect to be held accountable for the quality, that, that mission hasn't changed. We have a responsibility to provide a high-quality education to the children of this community, and we fully expect to be held accountable to doing that. And, and, and we will do our very best with it. So that would be my, and look, like many other things I've said as a superintendent, you know, you gotta, you gotta walk, you gotta walk the talk, right? I mean, and the buck stops with me. So, you know, I understand that if it's not, it isn't that, I expect that I'll be getting emails and I'll be getting public comments, and I, I fully welcome that. And I'm up to the challenge to delivering the greatest degree of satisfaction to our students and our parents through this model.
So I would. Sorry, I think some other things we can, just for some specifics around the curriculum itself, is number one, the supervisors with specific teams of teachers have been working throughout the summer to compact curriculum. And what that means is not to walk away from or move away from the, the standards and what we're required to teach, but instead where we would have taught a lesson that we might have planned over a week because we planned a lot of, you know, other additional activities to support it in that lesson, we're now going to get to the content, we're going to get to the standards and move through the content. We're going to identify specifically as a team what we are teaching and how we're going to move through the content for the year. So we're not going to move away from standards and drop off standards as much as we are going to make it, maybe move away from the frill, right? And, and really say, what is the content that needs to be taught and, and really pushed into the instruction? I think another thing that we can expect is this time, as Dr. Cascon alluded to, we're in a concrete schedule, right? Last year, we did not have a concrete schedule. Teachers were solely or predominantly teaching via Google Classroom where they were posting assignments. And that's not going to happen this year, right? We are ready, as you, you said, right? We've had time to plan. Teachers want to teach, they want to come back, right? They wish they could come back into the schools and, and be safe, knowing that they have this opportunity with the students and we have captive audience, right? Through these scheduled classes, I think now we're going to be able to address the instruction directly. Teachers will be able to provide the direct instruction, they'll be able to answer student questions, they'll be able to clarify, they'll be able to have small group instruction, et cetera. I think a, a, a third thing that I would just want to submit is, again, to Dr. Cascon's point about readiness at the beginning of the year. We depend on technology in order to roll out any of this instruction virtually well. We depend on Google, for example, to provide us meets and all of those features. They're not even going to be ready day one of school, right? We're going to get those features on a delay. So what we can expect is something that's very different, much more engaged, much more robust. We are going to hit the standards and we're going to have synchronous instruction on a schedule. And we can expect that as the weeks move forward, that will increase in rigor and increase in productivity because now those tools will begin to come in where teachers won't only have to present, let's say, in a Google Meet, just a teacher, but they'll be able to split the kids out into different groups, into breakout rooms, as we see in Zoom and other things. And all of those features will be available to us because I think at the beginning of the year, none of us are going to have those features across the state, right? So we will begin better, we will get better, and we will continue to improve. It will become more robust as those weeks pass by because we will have our professional development, our technology will continue to roll out, and our teachers will have a greater comfort level as our students and families will through the training on this virtual instruction by the time we have to pivot into hybrid.
That, well, thank you, that, that actually makes me feel a lot better about it. So I know we talked about, and I was happy to hear that in, in the plan, that we're looking to focus, I think, on our elementary schools in terms of reopening, and then middle school, high school. And I'm wondering with the orientation, it was mentioned that, you know, the kindergartners will be meeting their teachers. I think we said seventh grade and ninth grade orientation, I think, was the other one, and I apologize. But I'm wondering if K through five, those are, you know, I remember, I can tell you all of my elementary schools, teachers that I've had in West Orange, K to 12, or K to eight, every single one of them. And I just think that that relationship is just so important for teachers to have. So I'm wondering with teachers coming onsite or, or even at the beginning of the school year, if we are able to do some type of in-person meet and greet with teachers with their classes so that the students in our elementary schools can kind of put that face-to-face interaction? And, and obviously with social distancing and masks. But I think there's something to speak to the relationship that teachers do have with our students. You know, for most folks like myself, our work schedules are based around the fact that we know our, our children are going to be with teachers for eight hours of the day, right? So I'm able to go to work in New York City because I know I'm dropping my student, my child off at school, he's going to be there in the hands and care of, of a teacher, and then I'm going to pick them up later on. You know, so I think, you know, teachers do play that very important role with our, our kids. And so I'm just wondering if we've thought about having orientation of some sort at each grade level, not just at kindergarten?
Yeah.
I think we're beginning with kindergarten, I'm sorry, don't forget.
No, it's okay. It's, it's a great point. In a recent meeting with elementary principals, I said, I really want you to think about building in opportunities during this time for all kids that are safe, right? Outside, ideally, and that serve to connect them with their teachers, connect them with their peers, connect them with their principal, their school, their community. I think about what we did with the, you know, the, the moving up ceremonies. And I think we can even take a step beyond that, where, you know, that was just kids were just kind of driving through with their parents, or their, you know, their guardians, their, their caretakers. And it was great. I mean, the, the kids, the kids seemed to really love it, the family seemed to really love it. I, I think we can take that a step further whereby, you know, we don't necessarily have to have it via drive-by. So I've asked principals to really think, I said, I need y'all to really think about this because this is where you get creative as principals, and I may be limited as a superintendent, to really think critically about opportunities to bring our kids to campus for, for safe opportunities for that connection with their peers, with their teachers, their principals. So I think now that we've, we've, you know, we've cleared that hurdle, I think this is something we're really gonna focus on in the next several weeks. I'd love to see kids get together more often than not. We know, listen, we've been doing athletics outside. And when you talk about outside, it, it, it really makes it a lot less complex. I see no reason why we can't bring kids on and get everybody an opportunity to be on campus for, you know, for, for more, kind of more, not so much academic, but, you know, more social, emotional, community-building activities, for sure.
I think that would be very helpful for our, our families. And just kind of going back to curriculum, I think one of the other concerns that I'm hearing a lot from parents is they're, you know, they're not educators. That's not their profession. You know, one of my friends has a child taking pre-calculus. If they were to try and attempt to help them with their homework, there is absolutely no way. They cannot sit there and, and guide them through that class. And so I'm just wondering, with the virtual learning, what resources are we going to be able to provide the students and our parents who, one, either have to quit their jobs because now they have to stay home to, to educate or assist their children with what's going on, especially at the younger levels, right? Our high school students and our middle school students are probably a little bit more self-sufficient. But I'm wondering at the, at the elementary school levels, you know, how do we expect parents to be able to assist their children and work full-time? In many cases where that's not really an option they can do. So we do hear of a lot of folks are now having to look at, and, and look, this, every household has their own way of handling it. But just for those folks that do, either from a stressful situation, so I'm overwhelmed because I don't understand what my child needs me to help them with, or I don't understand the technology. I know, you know, one of the great things I thought about during the shutdown this past spring was we did have a lot of links and, and resources through our guidance department to help parents and students. But I'm wondering what we're looking to do now coming into this new school year? I think some folks don't want to just click on a link and read an article. So what are some of the things that we're doing to help parents and assist them in these types of situations?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna start this one, but Mrs. DeMendis might be able to follow up with a, get a little bit of a deeper dive. I'll, I'll kind of start higher, higher, higher level on it. You know, I think, you know, when you talk about high school students, you know, the, the first line of support and, and extra help or intervention, if you will, is really the classroom teacher. And I, and I think that, I think by virtue of the way we're doing it this year, you know, it's gonna look and sound and feel like regular classroom instruction. So I think the, the gaps in understanding, I, I would think would be less than they were last year. But that being said, you know, the teacher then there, therefore can make themselves available to students who need additional kind of one-on-one assistance or small group assistance. And so I, I think the first line of support for those really complex subject areas or where maybe the parent is not able to support, you know, that's where the, where the teacher would come in, like they, you know, they typically do a brick and mortar for extra help after school. Now, let me just preface this piece about the elementary students where I, I just want, I just want to kind of separate it from the childcare piece. I'm not minimizing that, and I'll address that in a moment. But I, I think, I think similarly, when you can expect a more individualized synchronous live support and instruction from the teacher, I think that's gonna take a lot of the onus off the parent. Now, that's not to suggest that for younger students, they might not need assistance logging on, they may not need to, for you to be an earshot or eye shot where, you know, you can kind of be redirecting them or something of that nature. But I think in a lot of ways, you know, it's the same way in which parents support, you know, engaged parents support children when we're in a brick and mortar model, right? You know, it's like, okay, like, let's sit down at the kitchen table, you know, open up your backpack, open up your books, you know, let's look at your agenda, what do you got going on today, you know? And, you know, whether, whether it requires you to support them or whether it just requires for you to be in proximity to them, providing them with positive reinforcement or what have you, establishing a space in the home, you know, supporting them in, in those ways, I think parents will continue to support as they have. You know, as far as the child piece goes, I mean, this is, this is the piece that, you know, this, this is a tough one. And, and it's, I, I can tell you that, as I've responded to many parents, as a person who's here to serve the community, to serve the parents, to serve the children, it is of great dismay to me that the requirements are such, that the guidelines, the protocols are such, that they have in essence precluded us from being able to bring in large numbers of students on a daily basis into our schools. You know, I, I still get emails, well, I think all the kids need to be in school. I, I agree, but we can't bring all the students into school if they have to be six feet apart. And we know that that's just the beginning of many other questions. You know, I, I don't have any, I don't have any easy answers for that. I, I do know that we're living in, you know, we're living in unprecedented times. We're living in times that are impacting people in unimaginable ways, from the loss of loved ones to the loss of jobs. I mean, our country is at a, a, a critical juncture now on many, many levels. And really, in many ways, could go either way economically, socially, educationally. And so the question is, is that we are going to do everything within our resources to be part of the solution and making sure that the educational piece doesn't go in the wrong direction. But we can only do what we can do within our resources. And that is very difficult for me to say because I want to be everything to everyone as a school district. But this pandemic has handicapped us from being able to do that. And I wish I had better answers relative to the child piece, care piece. I, 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 I don't. I mean, I know that we've, you know, we've, we've tried to, to pardon with folks, and I know that's been a, you know, that's been a source of some mixed emotions and mixed, mixed feelings as it relates to the all-day care programs, whether it's the cost or whether it's the fact that there are no buildings. You know, but the reality of it is, is that we do have options that can, can service up to 600 students in our school districts. The school district has committed to being able to provide financial assistance to families who may be in need to some extent, to at least minimize that burden. So we are trying to do what we can within our existing resources. But unfortunately, we, we can't be everything to everyone. What we can do is ensure that we're educating your children the best, the most effective way possible. But I understand it's difficult, and it's, it's a tough, it's a tough statement for me to make.
I think you, you answered the, the, the questions around how are we thinking about parents and them having to teach the students, Dr. Cascon? I think last year because we had most of our activities posted and because we did not have the synchronous instruction, then that did leave the parents to have to interpret and help and support the students with the direct teaching by virtue of the schedule, by virtue of the synchronous instruction. Then the teachers will be teaching versus just posting assignments and students having to teach themselves or parents to teach them. At the elementary, I agree, the parents will need to be there to support, they'll be the little ones. And I think that's why we are beginning with them, bringing them in for the orientations. And when we say bringing them, and the them is the student and the parent, right? So that we can have orientation for both at the same time. Meet our young ones, the ones we've not met yet, right? Meet our families, really engage in what will virtual instruction look like for them. And hopefully, as things go well, and as we say, stay, stay safe, then we can continue to roll in, bring first grade, then second grade and third, and work our way up through grade five. I do believe that because the virtual or the technology I do believe that because the virtual or the technology has allowed us to meet this way, you know, a board meeting as an example, we have almost 300 people attending our, our board meeting. That's not the norm, right? In person, we, we, we don't usually get that number because from the comfort of, of your home, parents can attend virtually. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to have parent academies and orientations that are virtual for parents to attend, where we can listen, where we can talk through some of the concerns and, and, and provide some training and some support for our parents through some virtual training for parents and support for parents. It seems that we do receive a lot of parents who are able to be present in this virtual setting and that's great. And so then we'd want to leverage that so that we can help support them that way as well.
Thanks. So just, you know, I, I consider teachers essential workers and given the same, you know, in the same world, the essential workers that we do have in our community, they really don't have a choice about their, their work schedule. So I'm wondering if we've thought about putting together some sort of, obviously, we can't, daycare is what it is, but some sort of parent assistance in the terms of for those essential workers in our community who really don't have the ability to change their schedules, you know, so they don't have someone to stay home with their little ones. Or so I'm just wondering if we've come up with, I'm going to say, I don't want to say a marketplace, but, you know, in our baseball league, it's a free agency department, basically. So anyone who needs help or assistance can go there and look for anyone who's offering to be caretakers or whatnot. And I'm wondering if we've thought about anything along those lines, just to kind of help the, our community members who may be looking for resources or someone who can step in to, you know, whether it's a high school student or someone that's able to assist them while they're, you know, at work. I know we, our community is very good at coming together to help each other out. So I'm wondering if we've thought about putting anything together like that where it's obviously confidential, so something that maybe our school just, district could handle versus it being posted on a Facebook or folks not feeling comfortable putting their phone numbers out. So maybe just something of a database that parents could kind of tap into if they need extra help or an extra hand while they're being called into duty or on call or something of that nature.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's a great concept, a great idea. And I think, you know, if, if tonight perhaps represents a, you know, a, you know, kind of pointing, you know, pointing the, you know, the, you know, the stern. What's the front of the boat, the bow? Is that what it is, the bow? Sorry, in my nautical terms. But, you know, that we're kind of pointing the ship in the direction we're headed now. I think we can, we can start, A, I think it provides clarity for our families. Not necessarily welcome or, you know, you know, necessarily, you know, favorable clarity, but it provides clarity on what, what we all can expect come September 14. And now it enables them, understanding that, to, 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 to reach out to the school district and see, you know, and, and help us understand what their needs are so we can kind of provide some of these supports and these services. You know, I, I would encourage folks to also use your building principals, you know, as touchpoints for that. I mean, I've been happy to serve as primarily as the mouthpiece for the school district and, and the recipient of much of the feedback and, and questions and concerns. But, you know, I, I also encourage you to reach out to your building principals. You know, they might have, you know, knowledge and access to resources within the school or within the school community that can be of assistance. But I think now that we know what the reality is, if you have a need, you have a concern, let us know and, and we'll do what we can to support you to the best of our ability.
So, and so I promise I'm wrapping up. But from a financial aspect, so we've raised the taxes in West Orange through the school board over $300 in the past two years. And I know so folks are kind of starting to question, well, now you're virtual, you know, where, don't we have any cost savings? And obviously, and I think you've put out there what some of the costs, you know, just for PPE alone, what those costs look like. So, and I'm not sure if that's something maybe John can answer, but are we able to relocate, reallocate some of the funding or some of the funds? I know we have the CARES Act, so a lot of things were covered, but some of the programs that maybe we're not able to offer now, are we able to reallocate those to help, you know, get our buildings ready to return back to school?
Mr. Calvin, I'm sorry, we are not having luck with these headsets tonight. You are unmuted. You're fine. It's very strange. You guys test fine and then... Nope. Can you check your carrot down by your mute button just to make sure that it didn't switch your microphone? You are able to hear us, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Oh, I heard you.
Good.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Good. So that, that is in our intention to shift money to pay for additional costs that we have not budgeted for, for the current year. We're in the process of now getting last year's audit prepared. We're hoping that we're able to deposit a, a large sum of money into capital reserve. And I'm thinking the money that will be deposited will be also used for what Dr. Cascon described earlier regarding the HVAC system.
Okay, great. And so what, I don't know if we've come to this yet and, and I might be ahead of this, but do we have a timeline on how we expect to? And this might be something that we're going over with architects next week. But do we have that timeline yet of how long it's going to take to get the buildings ready, to get all of our teachers with proper resources? Do we have a timeline for that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think is everything other than the ventilation, we will be, we will be largely prepared to open within the first couple of weeks of school. The only, the only piece that could take longer, will take longer, is the remediation of the HVAC now. And I can tell you that at Monday, at Monday night, we will have a much clearer picture for the board, for the community as to that timeline, that cost. And obviously, that's all perspective, you know, when we get into contracting, you know, timelines, you know, rarely go exactly according to plan. But much clearer picture for the board and the community on Monday. This coming Monday.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time to answer all of my questions.
Our pleasure.
Ms. Tunncliff. Thank you, Mr. Alper. I have a bunch of questions and I'll try to be quick. I don't know if you want me to list them all and then go through them at the end or if you want me to do them one by one. But my first question is on page 16 of the plan and we're talking about $300,000 for the PPE that has been ordered. Is that, how long do we anticipate that PPE to last? Is that something that we anticipate for the entire year? Just the first, you know, semester? So would like to get a better sense of that.
It's a great question. I can answer that. So, so as far as the, now that, that figure includes not only face shields and laundable masks. So as far as the face shields and the laundable masks, we would expect that those would last, you know, would last the better part of the year. We have ordered extras in the event that we need to replace some, whether they become, you know, dirty or, or broken or what have you. So we do not foresee a significant additional cost for the PPE. When it comes to hand sanitizer, alcohol-based wipes, we've purchased enough for every classroom in the school district, at least for four or five months. But, you know, if we were to have students in every school, every day, in every classroom, we would need more and we would have to do an additional order for those before the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you. The next question I have, we went through that, is on page 19. I know we talked about the due date of August 31st for parents to opt in or out of the full-time remote learning. And I know as a parent myself, and I've had some questions from some of my constituents about whether we can move that date out. I think people would like to kind of see how things are going and how they feel, how their student is doing, you know, before they commit to, you know, a full virtual experience or a hybrid experience. So I'm just wondering if there's any flexibility on that.
You want to take that, Ms. Mendez?
Sure. We're going to have an open selection or request for virtual. So parents, we'll start messaging that out shortly. But parents will have the option throughout the year, however it moves forward, to simply fill out the request and then transition to remote. Now, the, you know, the other side of that is that we won't be as readily able to reintroduce students once you've chosen remote. We're going to need some time and that might be on a quarter period, simply because, one, we'd have to maintain the social distancing, the number of students in the classroom, et cetera. But we will take those requests. We will move them as quickly as possible, assess our staffing. And if we can make it happen the next day, we would, right? But as long as we have the staffing and as long as we're able to maintain the social distancing guidelines.
So in the interim, we should have everybody try to continue to meet that August 31st deadline?
I think we're going to open that up now where they can open enrollment. They can continue.
Okay, great. Okay.
And I think you made a good point, Ms. Tunncliff, that because we are beginning fall virtual, the parents will experience what virtual feels like, looks like, sounds. And that gives them like a trial period. Okay, this is what it would be if I opted for a full virtual experience. And then we may very well have parents who decide after that that they, they want the virtual currently to date as of before we start with this meeting. We have 336 requests for full virtual.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. My next question is on the following page, on page 20. We, Dr. Cascon, you had mentioned about multiple tours being opened at the start of school to scan students for, to do the thermal scans. And I'm just wondering how, how do we tie that? Or what are we doing in terms of how we've normally done safety and security? We've not normally had multiple doors open. Do we have additional security officers? I mean, how are we handling the security aspects of that?
I mean, I think in the schools where the numbers coming in on a daily basis would necessitate multiple entry points, you know, we have either, you know, security guards and/or assistant principals that would assist in that process. You know, you know, that admittedly, you know, that's a layer where understanding, you know, what the human resources would be to preside over that rather complex process of onboarding, you know, 500 students into a school, thermal screening, keeping them socially distanced. If, if there were that were screened with elevated temperatures, understanding how we would move them to an alternate location, keeping them quarantined in an infirmary. You know, all those things are, they're on paper. But we would have the necessary security to make sure that those doors were, were secure. You know, and then, you know, we'd have to look at, at, you know, deploying staff to supervise the line of students waiting to get in the building to make sure that they stayed six feet apart and so on and so forth. So that, I mean, the, the entry of students into the building is a fairly complex operation itself.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And then, let's see. On page 27, I was, wanted to try to get an understanding because I know we had some evaluations for the child study team. And I'm just wondering how, how many are passed due? And how many do we think we can accomplish in the fall? And I know we always get new requests as well. So I just want to have a understanding of where we are in that process.
I'm, I'm going to make note of that question and, and ask Ms. Gogarty to provide that information for the board. I don't have it off, off, I don't have that data on my fingertips, but I will get it for you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I don't think I asked that one.
You stumped him, Ms. Tunncliff.
Sorry.
You stumped me.
That's hard to do.
Disappointed in myself.
As I was reviewing the general health and safety guidelines, I was thinking about our teachers in the building wearing a mask. And I was thinking about some of our accommodated students. And I wondered if, you know, and I'm not sure what the population is of our hearing impaired here in West Orange, would that present, that seems to me it would present a barrier for a student who might be watching. Are we also, I know, things that, in, at least in higher ed, we have to have things that are, anything that's broadcast online has to have closed captioning. So I'm wondering, does Google meets handle that? Is that something that, you know, we, we have access to through Google meets? So that students who are hearing impaired can get the, at least be able to read it? And of course, with younger students who may not be able to read yet, I don't know what, how we would solve that, maybe sign language? I don't know if there's a need for that, but I just wanted to put that on the radar, that something.
As in queue for October, the closed captioning and the translation. So subtitle, so right now, the predicted date is around October. So we said, it looks like, you know, it'll get better as, as the technology rolls out and as, as everybody starts to get prepared. Did you want to?
No, no, you're...
Yeah.
No, thank you, Ms. Mendez. You, you bailed me out. I was going to be 0 for 2 there. But it's a good question and I appreciate you asking, Ms. Tunncliff.
Thank you. All right. So sometime in October, then we'd have closed captioning. All right, great.
As long as you're on schedule, Ms. Tunncliff, as long as Google is on schedule.
Okay. I'm going to hold them to that. Let's see. And I just wanted to make sure, because it said on the daily cleaning requirements. This is, I'm now on page 49. I'm assuming when it says, you know, what mop and damp mop, are those disinfectants being used? It doesn't say that specifically, but I know in the, in the, on page 48, it does say disinfecting multiple times. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that.
Yep. So, so the, so the bathrooms, we disinfected multiple times a day, high-touch surfaces multiple times a day. And then the classrooms will be cleaned and sanitized nightly, you know, after everyone is out.
Oh, great. Okay. All right. And then page, let's see. Oh, on 67, I just wanted to ask, is the, would the board be able to see a list of the pandemic response teams for each school? If we could get copies of those, that would be great.
Sure. We're, the, Ms. Mendez, those are, those are reflected in the various school manuals? Is that accurate?
Yes, those are being developed. So each school is developing a pandemic response team manual, which will have their screening protocols specific to their entry, their exit, their, the doors that staff and students can enter through and, and things very unique to their building. So those are still being worked on. As soon as they're ready, we will publish. They will be at the elementary, middle and high school.
Ms. Mendez, do you, do you think that we could, although the manuals aren't complete, do you think that we could request from the principals, at least that portion of the manual for the board's perusal, the pandemic respond team membership from each of the schools?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And there are over 100 students in the process of reevaluation or initial eval.
Okay. 100 students. Thank you. All right. And let's see. Next question I have is, for the individual student conferencing at all levels, are those going to be sort of ad hoc? Or do you envision the faculty scheduling those regularly so that they can kind of touch base with each of the students on a regular weekly basis? How do you envision that playing out? Or is it more just as a student needs help that they schedule something?
I think it would be the latter. I mean, I think that we, what we found during the closures is that there were, you know, that, that in, in the, in the run of play, so to speak, day to day, you know, students came, you know, came to our attention, whether from their, their side, either themselves or their parents or their families, or we kind of identify, so you know what? You know, let's, let's, let's bring, let's, you know, let's get this, this child in and, you know, let's just kind of bring them in and, you know, and see what's going on. How can we help them? Or maybe they've expressed a specific need that they had and really just needed somebody to speak to or what have you. So I think it would be... Um, so I think it would be really more just kind of organic in, in the flow of things. Um, but, you know, admittedly, as we go on, we might develop a more structured schedule for that. Um, but I think it would be more kind of free form.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking more along the lines of sort of a wellness check of just not like with any agenda, but maybe it's a counselor role or something like that to just make sure we're not having kids flying under the radar who may really be having some difficulty, so that's why I asked that.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think, you know, if we, we have a student, for example, that um, hasn't been attending for multiple days. Um, you know, we were sort of limited in what we could do, um, you know, when we were completely closed. But with our buildings open, you know, we have the opportunity to say, hey, you know, let's set up a parent conference, bring them in, hey, what can we do? How can we help, you know, oh, he knows you haven't been on, what's, you know, uh, and, and really provide some individualized support to that student, so.
Great, sounds good. Um, I think Ms. Trickskill's already asked that, and I think that's it, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. C, with about a month to go, how are we doing uh, getting technology out to newly registered students, uh, kindergartners and others who've moved into the district who are newly registered? I know we've done pretty well, keeping it in the hands of kids who were already here last year.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is, this is a major operation that's ongoing, um, right now. Um, you know, the technology, Mr. Santiago, the technology team is, is, it's literally an, an everyday, all-day venture. Um, where, you know, Mr. Santiago's been, been messaging out uh, Messenger, SMS, social media. Um, you know, understanding what needs are and getting the, getting Chromebooks out, taking them in, reservicing them. You know, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be completely transparent with you, Mr. Alpert, we're gonna be right down to the wire on this thing. Um, and are, you know, very likely going to be continuing to, to distribute and pick up um, into that first week of, first week of school prior to the fourteenth, so we're gonna need every bit of runway up until that Friday, the eleventh. Um, to make sure that we get our devices into the hands of kids, but we're very focused on it, and people are working around, you know, around the clock to get that done.
Alright, great. Um, you know, not really something that I think we really have an answer for, but you know, it just occurs to me as we were speaking earlier about uh, you know, the idea of, uh, you know, you'd said something about, people are talking about a thirteenth year at some point. And I, I don't know if that's necessary, you know, to me, I feel like everyone really, Wyoming or not, I think we're all pretty much on the same page. You know, I don't know in the grand scheme of things if it's gonna be that much of a problem, if, you know, New Jersey fourth graders know their eleventh times table two months behind Wyoming's when this is all over, right? But it does make me wonder if at some point, uh, maybe the state might start looking at some of the curricular bloat, for lack of a better word, that's been put upon us in the past few years. You know, things that maybe seem like a good idea to legislators, but, you know, there's just not room in the day for it as it is. You know, I remember hearing from one of our art teachers a few years ago, who was really upset at the amount of time she was losing at the middle school because of other things that were becoming mandated, whether it be STEM or language, or, you know, that was before they decided that sixth graders need the personal finance. So, you know, maybe, maybe there's a, a little bit of hope there down the road when this is all over. You know, I think uh, Ms. Mendez called it frills, and I think that's a good word for some of what we're, uh, you know, what we have to keep doing. Probably more of a comment than a question. So with that, uh, I think we're good and we're ready to move on to our next segment, which would be questions from the public on agenda items, which of course includes everything on the agenda, including the presentation we just heard. Lauren will have some additional information in a second, but as you know, you can click the button to raise your hand, you'll then have three minutes. Please stick to the three minutes uh, to discuss anything that is on the agenda. And uh, make sure you give us your name and your address when you come in. Uh, do you keep in mind, if you have already sent us email, or if you would rather send us email, or if you think it would be worth, you know, we, we, we do read those, we look at those carefully, they're very important. Um, if you're running out of time, you can always do that, uh, we're each first initial, last name, at westoranschools.org. Uh, Lauren.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, as Mr. Alpert said, it's time for a comment. So if you are one of our call-in patrons, you simply will use the star nine feature that will put you in the queue. You don't have to repeatedly push it, it will put you in the queue, and then I will identify you by the last four digits of your phone number. Everyone else can use that raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen, if it has disappeared, if you're on a tablet or some other um, device, you can just touch your screen and move your mouse, it'll show up for you. You can uh, push it now, you do not have to wait for anyone to stop talking, it will put you in a queue. And with that, uh, I'm gonna ask Deb Cohen to follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, um, first, this wasn't in my original comments, I just want to comment on the ionizers that Dr. Kascone talked about. I have concern.
Deb, I'm sorry, can we just have your name and uh?
Oh, sorry, Deb Cohen, and I teach at Western Orange High School.
Thank you.
Um, about the ionizers, because they do generate ozone and can cause problems for those with asthma. So just something to consider and look into. As you're all aware from my prior email, I do not envy the position that the governor has put school districts in with figuring out return to school plans. The time, thought, and consideration that has gone into the process from the central office administration, school administrators, and all the other school personnel that have been involved, from custodians to the technology department, teachers, and all other staff, has not been a small undertaking to figure out the puzzle. However, there is still one concern that exists to be decided, that of the staff returning to the building. Having the students move to remote only has helped ease some concerns for teachers. We will not jump into a hybrid situation, which we are not entirely prepared for yet. We have not had the appropriate PD, which is in the plans, but we need that first. Starting out the year remote allows the district to provide that PD for teachers and other staff, including vital information on the social emotional learning we need to be helping our students with, even though it's not a separate curriculum and what we often already do, there will be some added things to keep an eye out for this year. Teachers, guidance counselors, instructional assistants, student assistant coordinators, child study team members, librarians, media coordinators, and so many more have shown they can do the job remotely if necessary. Even with it being last minute and a learn-as-we-go process in the spring, staff stepped up to give our students the best education and support possible. The majority of staff worked long hours to ensure we were reaching all of our students who needed that extra bit of help, no matter the reason. We answered emails, reached out to students and families at all hours of the day, as well as planned lessons that would keep our students engaged as much as we could, all from home. We do not need to be in our classroom to effectively teach remotely. The same concerns that we have for our students and their families apply to us as well. Many of us do not live in West Orange, but in other communities, and the risks due to the poor ventilation is still a huge concern. They haven't changed because students are not in the building. Shared spaces like bathrooms are still an issue. Staff with medical concerns or family members with medical concerns still have the same situations and will not be able to come to the building. We need to take care of our staff, just like we are taking care of our students and families. This is not easy for anyone, as staff, we want to be in the building doing the best job that we can do with all of our students, materials, and resources, but that is not safe right now. Please let teachers not have to come into work fearful each day about their health and safety and do our jobs effectively from our homes. We learned so much in the spring, and many of us have spent at least part of the summer figuring out how to improve the experience for our students so that we truly can not only give them the education they need and deserve, but the social aspect of school that they also need and deserve. Students can be engaged effectively with their teachers and classmates through remote learning, no matter whether their teacher is educating from their room or their house. It's not an ideal situation in either case, but we are teachers and we will do our part to educate and care for our students. Thank you for your understanding and hopefully your support and the desire and the need for teachers to be trusted to do what we do best. Educate our students, no matter what the situation or where we are is at the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I went back too far, there we go, and, okay, thank you very much. Julie Bookbinder, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is Julie Bookbinder, thirty-seven Callmore Circle. My first question relates to appendix F, page forty-seven of the plan that is attached to the agenda for tonight regarding contact tracing. If a student or staff member tests positive, will their class be notified? Or does the six-foot spacing envisioned for classrooms mean that the class is not necessarily notified of a positive test from within that class? My other questions relate to the elementary portions of the schedule. On page seventy-one for phase one, how many days in each week is the afternoon related arts? And how many days are independent slash homework? What is independent slash homework for the elementary grades? Do they have to log on for those periods of the afternoon? On Fridays, what are conferences? Are they scheduled one-on-one appointments or small groups? Do the teachers reach out for those, or does the family request them? On page seventy-five of elementary phase two, the live stream and synchronous, again for K to five, of what are the related arts? In one part of the schedule, it says four days a week live stream, and one day, one part, it says two days a week virtual. On page seventy-six, elementary phase two, again, when we're in the hybrid, if the student is in class in the morning, what is the afternoon for homework slash independent study? Does the child log on after they get home, or is that actually done just on their own? Uh, Mr. Rothstein asked earlier about conferences versus office hours, and it's still a little unclear what the difference is and if it relates to who sets it up. Um, finally, the asynchronous learning, is that going to be pre-recorded information from the teachers that the children have, or is that going to be internet content similar to what was provided in the spring? And finally, finally, uh, there's been discussion of if the child signs up for virtual and wants to switch to hybrid, but what if you're in hybrid and you want to switch to virtual? Is that only on a quarter basis, or is that something that can be done more quickly? Thank you all for the time and, and great attention to this plan, which has been a monumental undertaking.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Mara Lieberman, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, um, my name is Mara Lieberman, I'm at uh, one fifteen Old Short Hills Road. Um, and I also would like to thank you for the thorough and what will hopefully be a uh, well-implemented both virtual and/or hybrid plan when it hap, when they happen. Um, I have two questions. First, um, for those of us who have chosen to keep their children virtual even prior to you going virtual, um, and I plan to keep my kids virtual for as long as I feel they will be necessary, until I feel they'll be safe, which may very likely go beyond when you choose to go hybrid. Will, um, once you go from virtual to hybrid, the children still have the same type of uh, uh, curriculum, not necessarily curriculum, but the same type of um, implementation as far as a teacher that's teaching all hybrid, or will then, will they then be um, sitting in on a classroom where kids are sitting in the class with a teacher teaching the kids in person? Um, I just don't know if that would, you know, quite work out the same way as a teacher that's doing all virtual. Um, and secondly, um, in regard to enrichment, for those children that were in gifted and talented, I think they called it HAP, or were getting um, different enrichment, um, which, which was very much needed by a lot of the kids, um, will that still be available in the virtual model? Will there be um, enrichment and/or uh, gifted and talented opportunity um, for those of, for those kids that need a little bit more in their curriculum than the regular curriculum? Um, and I think those were my two uh, main questions. Um, again, I want to thank you all for your hard work, I know it's a very difficult time. I work in a special ed school for autistic kids, which right now is still hybrid, and I'm crossing my fingers and praying that they're gonna go virtual, because I'm scared to death to go back right now, to be honest, my kids can't even wear masks. Um, I'm gonna be in a full hazmat suit going back, and I'm not looking forward to it. Um, but I do thank you for all your hard work, and um, that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Kristen Russell, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yep.
Great, if you can say your name and the address for the record, please.
Hi, Kristen Russell, fifty-three Lawrence Avenue. Um, I just, thank you all. Um, the plan is really extensive, as you guys know, I do want my kids to be in school as soon as possible. Um, and I, it seems like you guys really are trying to work at that, um, and I appreciate that. My biggest concern um, with the starting virtual is, are you aware of who, what teachers would be willing to come in person for the hybrid? And now that you're pushing back, like that you, you basically aren't gonna know right now who's, who wants their children to come in person and who wants them to stay virtual. I wouldn't want my children to be put into one teacher's class, and then if and when we go to hybrid and in-person, that teacher isn't one that will come in person. So then they would need to change teachers after they've, you know, virtually met this one teacher. So that's a concern of mine, that we have a continuity throughout the year. Um, I know, obviously, you can't know for certain if something would come up with the teacher, but I would just hope that that goes into the planning of classes, um, which brings me to just, how quickly will we know who our teachers are and who our classes are? And is it possible, and this may be something to go to the principals with, I'm not sure, but is it possible to get like class lists this year? Um, so we can contact other parents and, and possibly be able to set up some pods or things like that, so we're all on the same page. Um, that would be helpful for us. Um, on another note, I just want to say, because I know this came up, um, in terms of how robust um, the curriculum will be for virtual, um, as somebody who lived through E S Y. Um, it was a thousand times better than the spring, I will tell you. E S Y was, was great compared to the spring, not ideal, because my son is four. Um, but, you know, the live, having a live teacher and live instruction made a huge difference, so I just kind of wanted to tell all the parents that. I also wanted to say, you guys do a wonderful job with these virtual meetings, I've been to many other ones that are not as well-run, so bravo on that. As well, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, and all credit to Lauren.
Thank you. Um, okay, thank you, now I'm all flustered. Um, Mark Maniscalco, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Uh, good evening, uh, this is Mark Maniscalco, I work in the high school as a dean, and I'm proud to serve as the president of the Western Orange Education Association. First, I want to express uh, my thanks personally and on behalf of the association to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the board for their real concern over the health and safety of our students, our staff, and the entire school community. These are difficult times. Um, and the health and safety has to become the paramount, has to remain the paramount concern. And, and the focus that we've seen tonight on especially the ventilation system is, uh, is real, it's real. And we have so many staff members who have either their own personal uh, health situations where, which have them exposed to elevated risks uh, due to the coronavirus, or they have family members at home with those kind of things that if we don't take care of the community, we are, we're in trouble. Uh, I am very proud to say that the remote uh, teaching experience has improved so much, and I only expect it to get better. I believe that with the synchronous uh, direct instruction with the kids, there'll be far more accountability and far more rigor, and it'll be a greater experience for everyone involved, and um, and I am hopeful that the parents will see that as well. Um, these are tough times, and all of us want to be back at work when it's safe. And we want to be back in those buildings with our kids as soon as it's safe, and we hope that soon. And again, on behalf of the association, on behalf of the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, the computer techs and the security officers, I want to thank you for all you're doing, as well as all the work of the pandemic response teams in the individual buildings.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Kathy Loslow, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Kathy Loslow, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Okay, I'm going to come back to Kathy. Jennifer, pardon my pronunciation of your last name, Beazer, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, yes, Jennifer Beazer, uh, eighty-two Lawrence Avenue. Um, thank you for this plan and for all of the work that you all have been doing to try to pull this together um, since March when this started. Um, and I really appreciate how responsive you've been to the community in general and to me personally, when I've reached out to you, uh, and I thank you for this. Um, I guess to follow a little bit on what Mark said about the ventilation, um, the ventilation is one of the things that scares me about this the most. And um, from, from what I was able to skim from the plan, um, we, of our twelve buildings, uh, ten of them have, have ventilation units that don't circulate any air unless the heat is on. Um, so I'm wondering how, like, what percentage of our classroom spaces have windows that can open and other ways to introduce air into the class? have windows that can open and other ways to introduce air into the classroom? Dr. Kascón mentioned that there are 80 spaces without ventilation. And I'm not sure, does that mean without a unit? That, does that mean without a unit or any windows that open? Are those spaces that aren't, have been used as classrooms or for that's spaces that students are in during the course of a day normally? It sounds like the remediation that even, that we're talking about that could be done in the short term as opposed to the major plan that would need to be bonded, that had been discussed previously, probably won't be done, can't be done by November 9th. And so looking at the long-term or longer-term, you know, it seems like the, the air, the ventilation is going to be a problem that couldn't, that could limit the number of students in those classrooms through the rest of the year. I mean, through June, you know, we don't know when the vaccine is really going to change the situation that we're all in. Which I, I don't understand completely whether teachers are expected to be teaching from the school or if they will be teaching from home or at the school at their option during the remote period. If they're required to come to the school, it seems that these ventilation problems are going to continue to impact them even without the students there. They have the full staff. If they feel that they need to wear masks to protect themselves while they're in the classroom, then they'll be teaching remotely with masks on, which is not ideal. To speed up, I see 64 teachers have indicated they may need to take a medical leave, but it doesn't say how many have requested an accommodation, and I was wondering how many that is? And if an accommodation could include being able to teach from home so that we can retain those teachers for our students. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to try again for Kathy Loslow. That's the name that's under the Zoom. You can follow the prompt on your screen?
Hi, thank you for all you've done.
Oh, sure. No problem. Can you have your name and address for the record, please?
Kathy Loslow, 62 Phillips Road, West Orange resident and teacher. My question is this, you never answered, are teachers working from home or in the buildings? Given the information we were provided, do we need to be concerned about air quality and such? Number one. Number two is, are we going to be expected to provide instruction remotely when students are not even tuning in? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Shiflett, if you can. Oh, okay. So Elizabeth, you're on a different version of Zoom. I'm going to promote you. Just hold on for one second. Don't do anything. And now Elizabeth, if you can unmute yourself, follow the prompt on your screen, screen?
Okay.
Thank you. Here you go. Your name and address for the record, please?
Great. My name is Elizabeth Shiflett. I live at 15 Oak Avenue. And my question is, what can parents do to help facilitate the return to in-person education? Would it be helpful if we signed up to be substitute teachers? And if so, how do we do that? Would it be helpful if we volunteered to be classroom liaisons between students in a classroom and teachers who need to teach remotely? Are there donations of particular items that would be helpful? Please let us know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I'm going to put you back to an attendee. Your screen's going to go weird just a little bit. There we go. Okay, fantastic. And Melinda C. Huerta, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen?
Hello?
Hi, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Melinda Huerta. My address is 17 Park Drive South, West Orange. Um, okay, I'm sorry. First off, I wanted to say I love the Rutgers program that we found to implement for our ESL and ELA Spanish-speaking families. A question about that, a few questions and concerns about that. Is that only for, specifically for Spanish-speaking families? Because based off of the presentation, there are 50 other languages within West Orange that are in our schools. And so I was wondering, are we also aiming to help those families with the other languages? And this 50 is a lot. 50 languages is a lot of different languages. And I would hate to see other families who are not of just speaking Spanish families be left behind. What is the process or how would they go about accessing, connecting with the community? Are they looking into connecting with other organizations in town? I know they said that there's no cookie cutter and that they're very open and fluid in terms of how to do, to go about this kind of advocacy or assistance? I also heard that there were, there was going to be staff development. Can staff development for the teachers, is that going to be made available to the community leaders? Or I think this would be a good opportunity for advocacy empowerment, whether we reach out to the PTAs? Or I know in the past there have been talks about school action teams. I think that would be a great time, this would be a great time to help implement both the PTA and school action teams to help advocate for the, you know, families who might be struggling to connect with the schools. And is there a program that we can look into similar to the Rutgers program for our families with children with disabilities? Whether it is special needs students, students who are disabled or visually impaired? As Ms. Tony Clip had mentioned, there, there will be implementing closed captioning for the meetings. But is that something that's also going to be for the Google classrooms and, and how are we helping the students with those special needs? Or even if there, there are families who have special needs? Not particularly the students, but reaching the parent who need those type of assistance? And I think that's it. Oh, I did want to make another comment about the 13th year. I think it does go much deeper, especially for the students who are of a lower socioeconomic ladder. They just need, they are definitely slipping behind quickly. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Molly Eisen, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Sure. And this is Molly Eisen. I'm a teacher at Edison Middle School. So I'm urging the administration to revise the requirement that teachers must report to the building in order to deliver instruction. One of the challenges of opening schools as outlined in the reopening plan on page 10 is a persistent and primary concern directly impacting 10 of the 12 district schools is the compromised state of the heat ventilation and air conditioning HVAC equipment. Then further down on the same page, I'm an ELA teacher, so I got to cite my sources, irreconcilable risks to the health and of students and staff in schools with extreme temperatures and without proper ventilation are compounded by the required use of masks for extended periods of time for our day. Now, since masks are now required at almost all times in school, teachers will have to be wearing one while we're delivering remote instruction from our classrooms without kids there. And these classrooms have already been designated as a risky area. So to me, it just doesn't make sense to have us in the buildings to begin with if our faces are going to be covered, which, and the students aren't there. So while I absolutely 100% commend the administration for taking a leading role in New Jersey for having us begin virtually and keeping kids home for their safety, please do not forget about the teachers, aides, office staff, administrators and custodians who are still required to be in the buildings as of now. If it's not safe for students, it's not safe for adults either. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Deb Reese, if you can follow the prompt on your screen?
Good evening. My name is Deb Reese and I teach at Kelly. I'm also the, very proud to be the West Orange Association's Vice President. I'd first like to begin and echo Mark's acknowledgement and thank you for putting, publicly saying, putting public safety first. And I'd also like to thank you, Dr. Kascón, for responding personally to our many members that have reached out to you with their concerns regarding a safe return to school. While we all agree that a return to in-person instruction is our goal and priority, the safety of our students and staff is of utmost concern. It's unclear tonight, listening to the comments, whether or not we're going to be returning to school to be teaching. In light of the irreconcilable challenges highlighted at the last town hall, I don't understand why we would want to require all teachers to return to the buildings for instruction. We simply cannot go back to school until it's safe to breathe the air and the HVAC systems have been remedied. I'm sure you're all aware that in Newark today, they reversed course and all teaching is going to be remote. That includes the teachers. Teachers are encouraged but not required to teach from their buildings, and they may choose to teach remotely. I know that these are very unprecedented times, and I'm positive that Dr. Kascón did not have reopening during a pandemic on his bingo card. However, I'm highly confident that we are in the professionalism and of our fantastic teaching faculty, and I know that they're ready to remotely provide the same content and level of rigor that we are known for. Finally, I would like to publicly again, thank you for all the work that you, Dr. Kascón, Ms. Mendez and your team have done to ensure the safety of our students and staff alongside ensuring the delivery of the quality instruction that we are known for and making this our highest priority. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa Tuzo, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Good evening. Lisa Tuzo, 15 Carter Road, also a teacher at Liberty Middle School and a member of the pandemic response team at Liberty Middle School. I would like to thank Dr. Kascón and Ms. Mendez and everyone on the board for the hard work they've been doing all summer. I too have been doing professional development as my fellow teachers have as well. But we are scared to death about going back into the building. Dr. Kascón said Liberty, one of the newest schools with one of the worst HVAC systems. We want to teach in person. It, it's killing us that we can't. But walking into a building that we know is not safe is just, doesn't make any sense. We can teach from home just as safely with the rigor and touching aspects of our curriculum that the students need. But making sure that the teachers, as well as the students, are safe must be a priority. Thank you again for listening and thank you for everything you, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Mizrahi, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen?
Can you hear me?
Hi, yes. If you can just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Alexandra Mizrahi, 66 Mitchell Street. Wanted to ask in regards of the Rutgers program as a state is a supportive service for 30 hours a week for general and special education only with ESL. Also state they provide case management coordinating linkage and ensuring ongoing with complementary providers that has been regularly given through Rutgers. Meaning that that will be when they talk about complementary, that they are going to be utilizing the Medicaid-based only insurance or the 3560, which is for mental health, for IIC, IHB, TVA, any, any other type of providers depending the level of care, which is what the state currently has been offered for a lot of years and no cost for any of us. That's my first question. The second question would be in regards of that I highly recommend to appreciate, as much as I appreciated the work that you have done, I can see from the day one from the meeting, that it's clear that the staff, and I don't blame them, doesn't feel very comfortable at returning to the school. Please consider about their fears and their feelings and their opinion about this, because it's key for all of us as the taxpayers. You also give, Scott, give a sample of the special education about the IP goals, which we know since last year, there's been presenting a lot of regression. So my question will be, how are we planning to address the education compensation for them? And how are we going to be paying for that? Lastly, it would be about the ventilation in the high school, especially concerned for me having two kids with a severe asthma. These suspected that is not being fit and that is a big case when we even have classes with special needs students that they don't have zero window ventilation, they're more like closet. How that they're going to be their safety, the kids with the special needs? And the last thing I would say probably just, because I still have two minutes, I went too fast, is that, thank you so much, everyone. I know that you guys have been working hard. I know in the special education, Christine and Goldheart, he has been working like a crazy. But please, just, I know that we want to return, okay? I want my kids to return like everybody else, but I have to be in a safe way. And I know that everybody has saying that on and on and on. But my biggest concern to this point is that is the ventilation is something that has not been addressed from the first meeting. And it's been question after question after question. The way that the staff fears is not being addressed completely, and it has been asked on and on and on. And the last thing is, the, if you are planning to do the Rutgers program, which is, I think is fantastic. Okay, and I'm glad that are utilizing a wraparound model, which is the, the need and, and concerning the social emotional learning curriculum, but we have those services available through the state. And I think it will be helpful if we finally utilize the state so we don't tackle or tax money. Thank you for everything. And Cookie, you are the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Jennifer Paul, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen?
Okay. Can you hear me, Cookie?
Yes, I can. Just follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Got you. Jennifer Paul, I am a teacher at Redwood School. I would like to thank the board and Dr. Kascón and Ms. Mendez for your well-thought-out plan to return our children to school remotely. I am actually beyond grateful that our administration had the foresight to plan effectively even before the governor allowed the all-virtual returns. However, I'm concerned that if it's not safe on various accords to return our students safely to the buildings with issues such as the most effective, like disinfectant sprayers not being there yet, as well as the big concern of the ventilation problems, then it is not safe to send our teachers and staff back to the buildings either. I have willingly given 33 years of my life to the West Orange schools, first as a student and then as a teacher. And I have loved every single moment of it. However, I do not want to return to those buildings that I love while it is not safe to do so and run the risk of contracting a virus that could completely end my life or one of my family members. Since we left school in March, I have taken every precaution to remain safe. I have rarely if ever left home, and I have spent the summer certifying myself on various tech platforms as well as working on curriculum and compacting our curriculum for a virtual return. I'm also sitting on the pandemic response team at my school, and I can speak specifically about the compacting. Ms. Merklinger, we're really working very hard. I promise you that rigor is going to be there with what we are doing. I am prepared today to do my best teaching in a virtual environment. As I have for the last 20 years, I promised to provide an excellent education to my students and can do some, do so, excuse me, from the safety of my home. This will ensure that my students have me as a teacher and see me daily and that I won't have to be replaced by a sub or another teacher because I have become ill. Please offer the teachers the option of teaching from home or teaching from school however they see fit to do it properly so they can do their best work. Thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jennifer Stoudnicky, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen?
Hi, how are you this evening? Jennifer Stoudnicky, I teach at the high school. First off, I do want to thank Dr. Kascón. First off, I do want to thank Dr. Cascone, Ms. Mendez and the board for working so hard to address all the issues, both expected and unexpected that have popped up. To say this undertaking is a Herculean effort is an understatement. But my question is, what is the rationale for having teachers provide instruction from the classroom and not from home? Students are being kept home for their health and their safety, but why are teachers not provided with the same option? Every time we leave our home for an extended amount of time, we are putting ourselves and others at risk of contracting COVID. And unfortunately, we have not been provided with any guarantees of safety. There is no guarantee that teachers won't contract it through room sharing or general daily exposure to others. There is no guarantee that we are asymptomatic. There is no guarantee that our children at home won't get it. And there is no guarantee that we will not pass it to our elderly or high-risk family members. Again, I ask why teachers are being made to instruct from the classroom. I would hate to think that our health and safety are not valued. I would hate to think that faith has been lost for us to provide meaningful and appropriate instruction to our students. I would hate to think the only reason we are being kept at school is because we are as, we are educators to work, we can't be trusted to work independently and progressively for the benefit of our students. And I would hate to think that we are being judged based on our experiences in the spring when we are all staff, students and parents alike, so unsure of so much, instructionally, emotionally and physically. Truth is, it is not just me that is relying on a decision to keep staff and teachers home. My children, my family, my students and many of the children, family and students of those in the district are relying on the one decision that will guarantee our health and safety and that is to keep us home during virtual instruction. Based on the workshops and committees I have been a part of, so much already has improved to prepare for our virtual instruction. And like so many educators in town, my concern is my students, their education, health, safety and mental well-being. But how can I possibly be effective when I go into my building only fearing the worst? If teachers are, if as teachers our safety and mental health suffer, then how can we possibly be productive as instructors? Thank you for the time to listen to my concerns and all the concerns of the community.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Aaron Kesselman, pardon, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello?
Hi, yes. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is his wife Rebecca Moses, 1 Galloway Court. First of all, I want to thank you all for all of your hard work. I fully respect that the necessity is to be virtual at this point. But I feel like the burden right now is really on parents to be the supervisors of the children. And I want to thank Ms. Merklinger for what she said earlier. I really feel like she encapsulated a lot of what I have been thinking and a lot of what the parents that I have been speaking to have been thinking. The burden of supervision is going to fall to parents. In order to work, it is critical to know that detailed schedule that was spoken of sooner rather than later. So when can we expect to know this? I would also like to see the afternoon block be perhaps optional for early elementary school children since those kids are going to require the most supervision while on lessons. And again, I want to thank Ms. Merklinger for what she had to say since some parents will have to give up jobs perhaps to supervise their kids. I have not heard it addressed adequately how parents are supposed to balance this. There are many parents who are not going to qualify for financial aid and yet can't afford the extra tutors for other programs or these pods that are popping up. Many of these issues could be addressed by better attention to a consolidated schedule, particularly for the younger elementary school age, so that parents can better balance their work and children's education. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jesse Aporta, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Jesse Aporta, 6 Carter Road, class of 2001. And I'm a current teacher in the English department at West Orange High School. Dr. Cascone and the rest of the team that has come up with this plan, I really would like to thank you for the thoughtfulness and consideration that you have demonstrated during the extremely difficult and unprecedented time we find ourselves in. Ensuring that the health and well-being of all stakeholders has been at the forefront of your plan to begin the school year is undoubtedly reassuring to all of the teachers that, you know, that you truly have what is best for the whole community in mind. Mrs. Merklinger said that she considered teachers essential workers. And while this may have been meant as a weird compliment of some sort, labeling us as such is just irresponsible. It is important that everyone understands that teachers are not essential workers. Those essential workers are people who have been deemed essential by government officials to maintain public health and safety, to keep critical infrastructure working when parts of the economy has been shut down. They are essential workers that need to physically be present to do their job. Teachers can do their job effectively in a virtual environment and no one in the government has labeled us essential workers. That does not apply to teachers in any way and frames teachers in an imprudent way. And gives your, given your role as a political figure in town, it is irresponsible for you to give the community the impression that we are essential workers when we are not. Furthermore, teachers are not frontline workers and the health and well-being of a teacher should never be in jeopardy because they are doing their job. Unfortunately, the call to have teachers working from the buildings would put health and well-being not only for the teachers themselves, but for their families and loved ones as well. Air quality issues, ventilation issues in the buildings and the mere fact that the sheer number of faculty and staff to run a group four school of this size would be asked to occupy the building simultaneously would exponentially increase the likelihood of exposure to the virus. Teachers want to return to normalcy as much as everyone else does, but it is just not safe to do so in the current state of a global pandemic. And let me be clear, as a teacher, it is more difficult and far more time consuming to teach in a virtual environment. The amount of preparation, the time spent grading and responding to student inquiries, which are all now written rather than verbal in a lot of cases. The constant emailing and calling of students who have failed to turn in work. The reviewing and grading process when so much more written work is generated in a virtual format. And the countless other demands that virtual learning calls for, especially for teachers like myself who have been in the classroom for years and now have to migrate everything that we had done into new formats is a far more demanding job than what it is teaching in a normal classroom setting. And that being said, regardless of my desire to return to the classroom, it is just not safe to do so in the midst of what we are dealing with on a global level. Now, having taught in the step-up program virtually in live synchronous learning environments, I can tell you firsthand that the experiences that were created were meaningful and that learning did occur and it can and will occur in the fall. In a day and age where nearly 50% of graduate degrees are earned online, increasingly colleges and universities are launching undergraduate programming, including but not limited to Penn State, Arizona State and Purdue Universities. A byproduct of this pandemic is that we are finding ways to better prepare students to achieve in our increasingly global economy. And while it may not have looked like we are all used to, and while it may be some kind of innovation bred from necessity, I hope that the community is reassured that deep and meaningful learning will happen in a virtual format. Standards and rigors can and will be upheld.
Thank you, Mr. Aporta.
Yes?
Thank you. We're out of time.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. Tez Roro, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening. Tez Roro, 24 Hutton. As always, I want to thank you all for all the hours that you're putting into this. I mean, just from the sample that we can hear today from parents and educators, we can see that there's challenging priorities to reconcile and it keeps changing. And I can see how creative we all have been in pivoting, you know, as new information comes and scaling back when need to. And I know that it takes courage to do that. And I think part of perhaps some of the disappointment with this killing back is that the district has been doing such a good job of being transparent and kind of sharing, you know, every step of the way that, you know, something like this can seem sort of a step back. I want to say that I do appreciate the partnership with the Rutgers University and the Parent Academy. As an immigrant who came here as a teenager and was the main translator for my family and in some ways, you know, still remain to me, I'm very sensitive to families who may not, you know, have English as a first language or may have technical difficulties or just the bare basics to help, you know, their students with two, you know, people technically savvy at home. We had some challenges, so I can only imagine. My questions are, talking about creativity, I know that there was a tutoring service, I think last semester, that some parents have found helpful. It was also my understanding that I think it's somewhat limited in terms of hours understandably because it was a volunteer force. I'm wondering, are we able to leverage our alumni community maybe to offer tutoring? You know, those who may have some time, that may be a great way to give back. I also read an agenda about the bathroom situation for kindergarteners, I think, taking it out of the room and making it into the hallway. I'm just wondering what changes there may be in terms of cleaning and things like that when it's time for hybrids since they're fairly small to manage. And then are we waiting to hear back from the state approving our plans to finalize the academic calendar? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for the next person, I just have the first name as Elizabeth. You'll have a prompt on your screen if you can follow it, please.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Keller. I'm a math teacher at the high school. Sorry, I didn't put my last name in there.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
So I just want to first say thank you to everyone for thanking for your hard work and all your time. I know this is a really difficult situation and there really isn't a great solution. And I wanted to speak tonight just to share my concerns about returning to the building. And I agree, I really liked at the town hall when you spoke about how we want to think about the safest way to educate our students. That leads me to now think about what's the safest way for me to deliver instruction? And in the building, and if the building isn't safe for students to return, how is it safe for staff? At the high school alone, we have about 190 teachers, not to mention the support staff. So you have a huge amount of people in that building. So it's very, very concerning. The ventilation has been raised. That is a huge concern. I teach in the new part of the high school and I teach in two different classrooms. I share those classrooms with three to four teachers and I'm not including my ICS teacher in that. So it's a real concern about our safety being there. And I would really ask you to consider to give teachers to ask, to allow them to stay home and deliver that instruction. As Mr. Aporta said earlier, and as my colleagues have told me, who taught at the summer school program at the high school this summer, that it was delivered from home. They were able to deliver that live instruction from their homes. Why can we, why can't we be given that option? Just to really consider that. I thank you for your time. I thank you for all your hard work. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there's no last name, but it's the name is Carol Anne. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, this is Carol Anne Holland at 71 Lawrence Avenue. Some of my questions have been asked and so if I don't manage to, if I repeat, please forgive me. One question was how the ELL program's going to work. It sounds wonderful, but I know that we have a lot of populations other than Spanish speaking. The other most important thing is just to say thank you so much, mostly for the courage to pivot to all virtual, even before the state gave permission. I think it was mentioned that if you had taken a survey that, you know, someone quoted the 70% survey. I think if you had taken a survey after the hybrid presentation, you would have gotten a much different answer. My son and I both, he will be a senior this year, as we heard the hybrid presentation, we just looked at each other and said, nope, virtual, because the hybrid just didn't feel safe. My other biggest thing is to really think about the teachers. I've been a parent in this district for at least 15 years and one of my hugest concerns for the last five or more has been teacher morale. Dr. Cascone, since you came on board, it's appeared to me that teacher morale has improved immeasurably. And I just want to make sure we keep those gains. I hope I'm right. I've certainly appreciated the transparency and I'm grateful for how much of your thought process you share with us. I just want to make sure that we're listening to teachers and keeping their morale up as well. And one thought I had is why not let them start teaching from home if they're concerned? And if it's not effective, then make them come into the building. The final, the other thought was if they're in the building, I'm assuming they're going to want to be wearing masks. And Ms. Tonac Cliff brought up the hearing impaired issue. But I would assume that many of the hearing impaired special needs students may not be able to read the closed captioning. So that may be a concern. And I also wanted to ask if the lessons that are delivered virtually, if it's possible to record them just in case there's an issue with getting online or if parents who aren't able to be with their kids while it's happening want to be able to reference it so that they can help with homework later. And I think that's it. Mostly just thank you so much and let's all stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Olivares, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you. Hi, Alfred Olivares with 15 Cliff Street in New Orleans. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for providing great questions and concerns and then the board and as well the crisis group to provide such a detailed plan. I have a couple of things that I wanted to make sure I kind of understood. They've done a really good job of presenting the actual plan. What I did not see and what I would like to see if the, if the opportunity lends itself is what will be the metrics to measure the success of the virtual program and of the hybrid program? Because one area, obviously, and when things happened the last time, there wasn't enough time to make shifts, right? And since the teachers have done an excellent job of spending the summer addressing what they're going to be training and teaching, I'd like to understand, you know, how will we measure success? And how will we be able to make shifts rather quickly to address those concerns that are presented by parents? The second thing I'd like to ask is, understanding that we have such a large population of students over 7,000 and knowing that we can't fit all the students in the schools, but yet we're moving to a hybrid program at some point, did we think about how do we support the kids from K through seventh or eighth grade by maybe going virtual for the high school students and then using the schools, the high school itself to support some of the more younger students? Obviously, the older you get, the less, you know, the more independent you are versus the younger students. And then the last thing is I do understand the concern of the teachers and for those teachers that are of concern for health reasons, I do think we could listen to them and still come up with a plan that allows them to teach virtually even though with students attending school. So thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Ortiz, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Ortiz and I live at 6 Lowell Avenue and I teach at the high school. As a resident and a teacher in the district, I have not only had the pleasure of teaching with amazing professionals in West Orange for the last 14 years, but I have also trusted my colleagues to educate my children. However, I've spent my summer, I've spent my summer being safe, attending workshops, carefully curating and planning lessons, teaching synchronously in step-up program, which gives me confidence in the success for the distance learning in the fall and working hard on the high school pandemic team to safely bring the students and staff back to our building. Thank you for putting our children first in the effort that you have put into planning for a safe return. I respectfully ask for the rationale to bring our staff into the building and put our health at risk. I want nothing more than to be in my classroom, teaching my students and working with my colleagues. Being in a classroom with poor ventilation, scared to death, stressed, masked, and in a hazmat suit, for those of us that can return to the building, will not be in any way a normal experience or an optimal experience for our student or ourselves. Thank you for your time and consideration and please stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this uh, person under Zoom, you have HH, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Yes, hi. My name is Sunfreezer Murray. I live at Eight Lesson Road and I'm an incoming freshman at West Orange High School. Uh, now, obviously, I'm a bit biased and this has been briefly addressed, but I'd like to suggest moving the start time back just a small bit, maybe like a half hour or so. As I know that for me as a student, it would make a huge difference in my health and productivity. You talk about encouraging a healthy sleep schedule, but the fact is that waking up early, six thirty, seven, seven thirty, is not a healthy sleep, sleep schedule for most students, especially teenagers. Many of us are growing and should technically be getting ten hours of sleep. And a good deal of us are also naturally night people, meaning that we are most productive in the afternoon and at night. I know for a fact that I'm most productive in the evening and do much of my work between nine and eleven at night without any trouble. I've actually been doing an online independent study class throughout most of this meeting. In the morning, however, I struggle to get anything done before noon, no matter how early I wake up. It, it can be difficult for me and many other students I know to go to bed before midnight, even though I wake up at eight AM every morning, a pretty reasonable hour for summer vacation, even when we wake up early to accommodate normal school hours. And even more difficult to wake up early in the morning before eight AM. This I know to be true for many of my peers as well. Many schools in the past years have been re-recognizing this, and I know some have been considering seriously moving the start time back even during normal conditions. Now that we don't have bus schedules and sports to consider, I think the coming months would be ideal for testing out a later start time. I understand the many cons of this as discussed earlier in the meeting, but moving back the start time just a half hour or so really presents all of these problems. Personally, I think there's a huge difference between waking up at six thirty versus seven. I think that just that kind of small change will make students much more productive, so I implore you to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zoila Ariaga, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Zoila, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello?
Yes, there you are.
Yes.
I'll give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Uh, Zoila Rosario, Ten Kings Terrace. Um, I have two questions. I would let you know how flexible will be for the students to complete their daily work. I'm working from home and my daughter needs some help to complete her math and writing since she takes uh, special classes and redwood. So to me, since I'm working from home, it's very hard to do two things at the same time. So usually I help her after I'm done with my work. And sometimes we usually submit her homework um, eight, nine o'clock at night and I let her sleep a little bit in the morning, a little bit late. So how um, strict will be to connect every morning because I really can't help her. She needs help to complete her homework since she's not capable really to do it by herself in some aspects. Also, how um, strict will be to the she can login on Friday since I request from my employer to go back to work at least two days in a week? And I would like to know if Friday will be a little bit flexible for me to come, go to work. Um, the other question is, I would like to know if you guys can maybe, are we okay for working parents to see if YMCA can open a part-time aftercare opportunities for us at least for two or three days? That way we can also go back to work because I, in my case, I can't afford to lose my job. And the last one is, I'm worried about how this information is distributed to the non-speaker English people because it's not fair for the kids that fail behind if their parents, that there are not English speakers or they're not computer savvy. Thank you and thank you for all your help and thank you for Ms. Merkling, that she really speak out for working parents. Thank you. Good night.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Michaela Bennett, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Oh, I double-clicked you, Michaela. I'm sorry about that. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, this is Michaela. I live on Old Indian Road. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. Uh, I was listening to you in my right ear while listening to the DNC in my left ear, but something told me to check my messages and there were seventeen messages from teachers who I have not heard from since long ago when Rutsky was at the helm. So I feel it's rather important for me to at least express to you the concerns that have been shared with me and that I share as well. So look, teachers are the stewards of our children's classrooms. And how can we expect them to be focused on educating our children when they're fearing for their safety? Why don't we treat them similarly to how we protect doctors? Not hospital, emergency, essential workers who must go into work to preserve life, but like those GPs and specialists who as soon as COVID was upon us, switched to that, those remote appointments only to protect their health for the benefit of all of their patients. The teacher who addressed Ms. Merklinger's misstatement, I think his name was Mr. Laporta, I'd like to underscore those statements. Teachers are essential, essential for our children, for our schools, for our district, for our community, for our town, for our state, for our nation. They're also essential for their families, their children, their parents, and their personal lives. How can we with intellectual honesty bring teachers into classrooms when they're not safe and they're not even safe for our children yet? These people are the backbone of the entire process. I'm going to remind you of the three teachers who returned to teach in Arizona. No students, just those three teachers in a classroom. One is now dead from COVID and the other two are suffering through the illness. Why on earth would we risk our most precious district resource? For convenience? For the courageous? Ha, have we become that callous? Clearly, these seventeen teachers trust that I'm hearing their fear and I urge you to listen as well. With the little time that I have left, I just want to bring to your attention and invite any of you who would like to experience this. I teach in something called an on-live um, platform. There are live students, there are online students, and then there are online students who attend live. I would urge you for students who wake up later that you afford families that flexibility and those types of options. And if any of you want to experience it, I can share a link so you can attend any of my classes and see how it works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob and I Surless, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Rob and I Surless, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Hi, Robin, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Um, I don't think I need to remind anyone sitting on the Board of Ed that we are in the midst of a global pandemic. In our country alone, we've lost over a hundred and seventy thousand lives. I think we're up to now a hundred and eighty-six deaths right here in West Orange. Um, if we had had a federally mandated mask-wearing protocols in place months ago and took the measures that other countries have, it's doubtful we'd be in this position we are in now. Um, that said, I think it's entirely disingenuous of a board member of a public school district to valorize the offerings of private schools. They are different entities and cannot be compared in size and scale, in cost, et cetera. It makes me very uneasy that this is what was brought to the table here earlier tonight. And further to assert that the learning and expectations were simply eroded in the spring erases the tireless number of hours, labor, lost sleep, et cetera, that so many of our staff performed to make the transition so swiftly last spring. Was it optimal? No, none of this is. The work of our public school professionals, the work that our public school professionals do is most definitely essential. Whether they have to be on site to do this essential work is not at all clear. Given what we've heard tonight, the only rationale that I can see to explain the decision to compel faculty and staff to be in school to do their work is a desire to control this essential work and to further de-professionalize public school teachers and staff that took its stride during the dark days of the Christie administration. I do hope we can do better. Thus, I ask you, the Board of Ed, to amend the plan to offer our staff a choice to work remotely. Thanks very much. Thanks for all the work that you're doing. It's really appreciated here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia Sorrenti, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening. I wanted, uh, I'm a basic skills teacher in the district. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to Dr. Kascone, Ms. Mendez, and the entire board and everyone behind the scenes for all the careful thought and planning that is going into this upcoming school year. I can say, after comparing it to my own children's school district, that West Orange plan, West Orange plan is significantly more thought out and comprehensive. I appreciate that none of the decisions are easy and that the entire school's community health and safety is paramount. With that said, after listening to all the safety concerns that have already been addressed and what still needs to be addressed in the future, if the target for children is to return to in-person instruction in November, I urge the board to reconsider and align the start of the teachers in person with that of the students and let us begin the year virtually. We all want to be back in the schools, working with the students, but I ask that we make sure it is safe for everyone to do so before we do so. Again, I want to say thank you for everything that you guys are doing. It is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Sanfi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Craig Sanfi. I teach at Liberty Uni, Liberty Middle School. And I just lost track of my question, so give me one second. My question has to do with A and B day scheduling that I saw. Hold on. How will related arts and health classes work when it comes to the schedule? At the middle schools, we have A and B days, yet the proposed schedule does not speak of this. How will these not-every-day classes occur within the proposed schedule? And that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Patty Rudy, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen. Hi Patty, can you hear us? I have you as unmuted. Can you hear us? Okay, hang tight Patty. I'm going to mute you for a moment. I'm going to go to the next person. Erin Smith, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, almost morning. Um, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Erin Smith and I'm a special education teacher at Liberty Middle School. And I just wanted to, again, thank you all for taking the time to listen to the public comments. Um, I am a part of two pandemic response teams, Liberties and Middle School, High School, Special Ed. And throughout these meetings, we've discussed questions and ideas, but again, there are still holes in the plan. And I know what the easy decision is, which is to bring everyone back into the buildings, but it's not safe. And I'm hoping that tonight, and I'm not going to go into detail because I know you all have heard it already, but I'm hoping that given all this information tonight and the concern of the teachers and p-parents in the community, that we hope that the uh, teachers would uh, stay virtual just as the students are. And just some forethinking here, um, if you're a teacher that has different rooms throughout the day, your exposure is then heightened. So for example, my normal schedule, I would have five different rooms within one school day. So I'm not a math person because I'm an English teacher, but does that mean that my exposure is an increase by five times? That is a huge concern, especially, I'm going to put it out there, I have family members who are high risk. Does that mean I, given my high exposure now, I can't see them? That puts a huge, um, it puts an issue out there for a lot of families, not just mine, but I'm sure a lot of people in district that have different rooms are having the same concern. So again, that is forethinking, but I'm really hoping that the board hears our vulnerable words and that we can start the, you're all virtually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Rudy, are you able to hear us? I'm going to ask you to unmute one more time. Hopefully that maybe will do it. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. Okay, I'm going to come back to Patty once more. And we have just a person with the name Joe, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello?
Hi, if you can have your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole Soriano. I am a teacher at uh, BMELC. Um, I just want to thank everybody for everything that they're doing behind the scenes. Um, my couple of questions and concerns are, we share our space um, with the church across from the JCC. We are unaware of them using the space, utilizing the space after it has been cleaned. We don't know their contact, we don't know their background, who they have been around, um, if their temperature has been taken, if a family member has, you know, fallen ill due to COVID. So that for me is a large concern. It is not a, you know, because we are renting from a building that they do have the right to use other classrooms. So that for me um, is a concern. The other thing was, I feel like some people are getting the idea that teachers are getting penalized if they needed to go virtual due to being high risk. I myself am a type one diabetic, so now I had to weigh my options of either teaching where I absolutely love to teach. It is a dream job for me. I work under an amazing principal. My colleagues are just rock stars. But I had to weigh whether, if I had to go virtual, that there was a possibility that they were going to hire somebody who has not mastered eighteen years in special education. And I would lose that rapport with parents and I would be replaced and possibly put somewhere else. So that was a concern of mine and just the risk for colleagues across the district. I, for one, firsthand saw my father, who dedicated forty-six years of his life to West Orange, he is West Orange, suffer and die tragically from this. I do not want to see any of my colleagues nor their families have to endure the pain that my family and I have gone through. So please, take into consideration people in our district, our own colleagues that have had loss. We don't want to face it again. We don't want to lose each other. We want to be in this together. So please, going forward, take into consideration of allowing us to go virtual, same as the students. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. And I'm going to try one last time. Patty Rudy, can you hear us? Unfortunately, uh, we are not able to make contact with Patty. Um, possibly going to have to email in your, your question and comments to the board. Um, Steven O'Kyle? Can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Lisa O'Kyle, uh, twenty-three Malarkey Drive. Um, I have to say, I was not planning on speaking at all, but you know, hearing all of these speakers really prompted me to call. I have to also say that I certainly do not envy all of you there because I think this is an extremely difficult job that you've been facing, but I really do respect and appreciate all the work that you have done. Uh, I believe that I speak for many people working in the system. I believe that I speak for many people working in the system. I am a paraprofessional. I've been there. This will be my 16th year, I hope. But I need you to know that I am actually petrified to go to school. And it's not just for my health, but for the health of my family and all of those that live in my home. I am now extremely grateful that there are three generations in my household. And it's, I can't imagine going to school and coming home and possibly being a carrier or getting sick myself, but more being a carrier for my loved ones in my home. Because it's not just the teachers that are going to be in school, but it's being with everyone that they've ever been with and everyone that they've been with. It's not just a simple, you know, saying hello to a colleague that I would love to see, but it's also seeing all the other people that they've been with that they don't maybe even realize. It is extremely frightening and hearing about, you know, the ventilation system did not give me a reason to feel very confident and comfortable about going back to school at all. I was at first very excited when I heard that the students were starting later. I was like, oh, great, I can do this. I can do this. And then I just started thinking about all the implications that have to do with going back to school. That it really, really scares me and, and I'm sorry to be like so emotional, but I really feel it. I would love to be with the kids and be with the staff. But I just need you to think of all of West Orange, like all of the students and the staff, their safety first. And I really do wish all of you good health and safety. And please think about that when you think about asking the staff to go back to school. It is frightening, truly frightening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And we have Jeremiah Salinas, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, good evening. It's Jeremiah Salinas, Seven Crystal Lab. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We've been speaking about the air quality in our school districts as if this is a brand new thing. This, this has been something that has been kicked down the road for many, many, many years now. Even way before Dr. Cascone was here. So I am not confident that the district is going to have the plans in place to be able to address that specific situation in.
Mr. Salinas? Oh no, we have lost.
Connection with Mr. Salinas?
Let me try to see if I can get him back here. Mr. Salinas? Nope, he dropped off. Not sure what to do about that. Um, oh, he just raised his hand again. I.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
It's a, it's body internet service, which is something that, you know, I've been dealing with for a while. I can only imagine what other families are dealing with when it comes to, you know, internet service at this time, but going back to the point that I was making. You know, we had the opportunity to address it, but we didn't address it. We had the opportunity to make sure that these things were, were taken care of. We weren't forward-thinking and I'm not saying that, oh my God, I saw the pandemic coming and, you know, we should have done it. But we don't have a serious infrastructure plan in place that we take seriously, but we don't take seriously the demands of the public, but we don't take seriously the concerns of the teachers that work in our schools every single day. When we don't do any of that stuff, when our Board of Ed doesn't meet those requirements, we, 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 we continue to say the same thing, right? Oh, some of these units are as old as the buildings are. Well, that's, that's unacceptable. To me, that's unacceptable. To me, it's unacceptable that my daughter still goes to a school that windows don't open. That's unacceptable. It's unacceptable that we don't have a serious, a very serious infrastructure plan even now with, with what we're facing. We don't know what the future holds. We don't know if we'll be able to come back to school in November. And I don't see any other plan in place that, that addresses that. We're just looking at November as that's the date that we're going to come back. And I, I, I hope to God that we do. I'm a school teacher myself. I want to go back to work. I want to be in there. I want to see the student. I want my kids to go back to school too, but it's, 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 it's not feasible to say, yes, this is going to happen. And then November rolls around and we're still not ready for, for, for the next phase. Or we have to roll back somewhere else. I haven't heard anything about high school sports either. I haven't heard anything about extracurricular activities. Are they still on? Are they still off? I mean, there's many, many, many questions that are still left lingering. And again, all the concerns that are raised by parents and all the concerns that are raised by teachers that work in our school, they just seem to keep falling on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Rappel, that was it for public comment on my end.
All right, thank you. Dr. Cascone?
Okay. Well, I really appreciate all the folks who came out and spoke. So important, right, to, you know, to hear the perspectives and the questions, good questions and thoughts and many questions, you know, so we are going to try and, though we are running late, I think that's okay. I mean, I think it's important for us to honor the questions that we can answer tonight by responding to them. And so we're going to kind of plug through here. And we're going to go in order. So when it, when it relates to to contact tracing, you know, contact tracing, we follow the lead of the Department of Health and our district physician in that particular case. So the easy answer to that is, is that if we had a confirmed case in a classroom, the likelihood that those, the, the parents of those students would be informed, informed would be very high. By virtue of the fact that even though the students were en masse and socially distanced, the fact that they were in a confined space for a prolonged period of time, more than 10 minutes, would very likely necessitate a communication with those families and could potentially necessitate a quarantine. But that would not be a decision that I would make as the superintendent of schools. That would be a recommendation that would come to us from the Department of Health and/or our district physician. Just reading through the questions here, those were some, those were some more curricular oriented questions, which I'm, Ms. Mendez, are you still with us?
Yes, she is still here.
I don't know if you, I know you're looking at the same document I am. I don't know if you want to kind of trade off when there are kind of more curricular based questions?
Sure. So for elementary, how long is related arts? Related arts, each related arts period is about 30 minutes, 20 to 30 minutes. Elementary students could expect to have one, one time per week, two related arts classes. So they will rotate. So it will be one time per week. So that afternoon segment is really just dedicated to that purpose. One of the parents asked, is that something that could be done virtually online at a different time? We are looking at that. So yes, we are seeking to find flexibility there. There was, there were questions around conferences. What are conferences? Conferences would be where a teacher may reach out to a student or set up a time to meet with that student to provide further support and/or the parent with the parent. And the teacher would probably be doing the reaching out, right? Versus the office hours and the office hours would be where the teacher would be available for a specific set period of time. The teacher would inform the students, I will be available from this time to this time. And then students could pop in or make appointments to meet with the teacher during office hours. For live stream versus synchronous, live stream is something that we are coining for the hybrid model, which would be that while we are providing in-person instruction, a teacher's providing in-person instruction, at the same time, students would be in a Google Meet, they would be engaged in the classroom from their Google Meet virtually. So that's what we're calling live stream, that we'd be streaming them into the classroom. Synchronous instruction, which is still live, right? We're just, you know, interchangeably using these words, but the synchronous that we have planned for the fall would be a Google Meet where the teacher is sitting and providing direct instruction to the students, only to the students in that Google Meet. They would not have both the Google Meet and live instruction have, happening at the same time. So they're both synchronous, but live stream is more for the kids who are engaging virtually from home and there are students in person. The afternoon for independent study, independent study means homework. So that's where children will have time to do their homework. There is no formal instruction there. So parents, if you want to plan around the day and establish your childcare and things like that, really that nine to 12 period is where the content is being taught. And then once a week, the students will have a related arts in the afternoon, which could potentially be achieved via the classroom. So that nine to 12 period is really where we'd like to dedicate it to the instruction. The asynchronous is that pre-recorded information. It could be, it could be pre-recorded, it could be a reflection piece, it could be an independent assignment, a project-based assignment. So that's really up to the teacher and to the content. But once we start to move into full virtual, please feel free to communicate directly with the teachers to ask them about what that Friday assignment would look like and, and the teacher will communicate what their expectations are for that Friday. There was a question about flexibility with regard to, what was it? It was flexibility with regard to maybe a parent's work shift and they may work late and they help their child in the evening. But homework is due during the school day. And so the work itself, the classwork that is due with the teacher will be accomplished with the teacher during that synchronous instruction. Homework is generally due the next day. And so then I think then that would accommodate what I thought to hear the concern. However, if there's any time that you need extra to help your child, to support your child or for us to work with you, please just reach out to the teacher. As long as we're communicating, I think flexibility is present and it's available, right? And so we'll communicate with teachers, teachers will communicate with parents and then, and whatever the circumstances are, we'll work with our, with our parents. There were questions around the selection for full-time virtual instruction. We answered that a little earlier, but just to, to repeat, a parent can opt for full, for full-time virtual. We have that as ongoing. We're going to start to message that out that at any point in time, if you'd like to select for your child to receive full-time virtual instruction, you may do that. And we will honor all of those requests. Moving from virtual back into person, that may take some time. And so then we'll have to take those case by case based on our staffing and our social distancing. Once we move from virtual to hybrid, will all students have the same type of implementation? And so then for virtual, the teacher will be present synchronously on the screen, direct instruction with the students. Once we move to hybrid, then the teacher will have to tend to the in-person students as well as those who are live streaming in. So that will feel different. It will look different. That's a part of our PD plan to really work with our teachers to deliver different types of instructional strategies that would help work the two groups at the same time. We do have some planning to do around that area. So as soon as our staff is back on board, you know, we'll start working through the PD to accomplish that. GNT will still be available. It will be delivered. The teachers will set up their times with the students. They will have a Google Classroom that will also meet synchronously. It will sit outside of the nine to 12 schedule. It may be on the Friday or in the afternoon because we are giving the, that nine to 12 to the core content, but we will still have GNT and the teachers will coordinate that with the, with the students.
Thanks, Ms. Mendez. Yes. So I think, I think, you know, and I'm just kind of looking through the questions and obviously there, there were kind of, there were, there were a few, a few common threads and themes. I'll save the, you know, the reporting onsite for perhaps my concluding remarks. I know we got some good feedback and questions about our partnership with Rutgers. And I would just like to say, you know, we will absolutely take those questions. They're, they're good questions. They're, they're questions that we're considering as we, as we kind of flesh out exactly how we're going to move forward in that partnership. I think tonight represented the, the first step in that direction, which was bringing this partnership proposal to the Board. You know, but to say that our strategic plan and working with this partner has been completely fleshed out would be disingenuous. That has not happened. But I think we've gotten some great feedback tonight to help inform our planning as we move forward with that. There was one question, which was just kind of a one-off, but I think it's, it's, it's an important question, which was regarding our approval from the state. I can tell you that I did share a draft with the County Executive Superintendent on Friday within the, the necessary timeline, though he understood, Dr. Zara understood that it still needed to be run through the Board. I can tell you, considering that the County Executive Superintendent utilized a number of pieces of our plan to help inform feedback that he was providing to the governor himself, I think the likelihood that our, our plan will be approved is probably pretty high. But we will wait to get their feedback and determine whether they, they support it. I'm optimistic that they will. But it is a good question about how it will impact the school calendar. I have briefed the Board on this very point and it's worth mentioning to the community now. Because we have kind of taken back four instructional days that first week, we need to find them elsewhere in the calendar where, where they weren't previously. And we will be moving a revised school calendar forward to the Board for Monday's meeting for approval. And I can share with you what the impact would be. So basically it would take those four days, which previously were the eighth through the 11th. One will be addressed by establishing a half professional learning day and half student contact day on October 12th, which was previously a, just a full vacation day, a day closed. We will use Election Day, which now has been designated as a virtual day by Governor Murphy anyway. The third will be to utilize February 12th, which was previously a day off for a four-day break over February. Will be used to reclaim the third. And the fourth will be on June 8th, which is the primary day, which will be a virtual learning day. Hopefully we'll actually be onsite and we'll just have a virtual learning day that day. But those will be the ways we'll recoup those four days in order to get that staff development on the front end. There will be some, some, some things we have to work through the Teachers Association, but we've had conversations with them and are optimistic that we can get that done. So there would be some revisions to the school calendar that would be necessary, but they would not really drastically change that structure in terms of removing large days from vacations or extending the school year later than it already is. So, and, and we've gotten some, some good questions. There, there were questions concerning ways in which we could perhaps restructure the elementary time or what options there would be that we could be more flexible in our expectations for elementary students to give greater flexibility to working parents. I think those are some good, really good questions and good feedback that we're going to bring back to the table and rethink our plan to be able to offer that accommodation, make it a little bit easier for working parents. There was also a point of, you know, what can parents do? You know, I think that the, the greatest, the greatest support that, that parents can give to us at this time is to just really be thinking outside of the box as much as possible to be, to partner with us as much as possible while we're in this virtual mode. You know, and, and I, I think what parents have done in terms of thinking about pods and bringing together neighborhood study groups and things of that nature, particularly now that we aren't necessarily bringing students back in the short term and with concerns about co-mingling students and things of that nature. and with concerns about co-mingling students and things of that nature, I think makes a lot of sense if they can be organized. But let's talk about, let's talk about teacher returning to site. Obviously, this is, at this moment in time, you know, that was not a point on which the board had come to, you know, had come to a conclusion, or that I had previously brought a revised expectation to the board. So it would be premature at this point in time for me to say that we're taking one position or the other. Obviously, we will need to go back and consider that feedback. I will then have to make a recommendation to the board in this regard. I would like to share a couple of insights into kind of why we are where we are tonight. Let's not forget that it's, you know, it's been, it's been only about a week since we were hurtling headstrong into this idea of having all of our students and all of our staff coming back in. And to some extent, the expectation that we, at some point in time this year, get that done is still there, and not just simply from our parent constituency, but also from the governor himself. I mean, don't forget, the governor has simply said, "You can go virtual if you cannot address the health and safety concerns." Now, I do believe that the health and safety issues become exponentially greater when you actually put large numbers of students into the schools, rather than when you have teachers working individually in their classrooms. I would contend that the workplace is not as dangerous as some would assert for a teacher working individually in a classroom. But that's just my opinion. That's just my opinion as a layman. It's not scientific. And I need to be able, and the board needs to be able to say that we can stand by that statement from a scientific, from a medical standpoint, and from a facility standpoint. And that is what we intend to do, in as quickly and as expeditious a manner, is to understand exactly what we need to do in order to be able to say that confidently, and be able to communicate what that timeline is. Now, in defense to the board, although there's only, I think, two, or maybe, maybe three members of the board that were present here for the construction of the previous referendum? Is it three? Yeah. And, you know, that referendum was a $54 million referendum. That's what it's going to take. Now, can we remediate gradually in small steps over time? We can, but I think the reality is, is that we were cautioned very strongly by many folks that we would have been foolhardy to move forward a $54 million referendum in this time of fiscal, you know, of fiscal prudence. But you're right. And I think what's happened is, is the issues that we've known existed in the buildings, this was the straw that broke the camel's back, right? It was, I would argue, reconcilable, though not great. And now, it has become irreconcilable with the addition of a global pandemic and a potentially lethal virus, and I think we recognize that. But I think the reason why, at this point in time, we've still been talking about bringing staff onsite is because the premise of getting students onsite still remains. Now, I think next week will be a critical juncture, because we'll understand in talking to the architects, what would be the earliest that we could remediate our HVAC issues in order to do that. And that will set a different point in time. And therefore, it will set a different point in time at which we would start to really need to think about bringing teachers back in. Why? Because we recognize that the arrival of teachers and students onsite can't be contemporaneous. Our teachers need to be in school before our students for a variety of different reasons, not the least of which is becoming comfortable with the health and safety protocol before they're actually asked to reinforce it and enforce it with students. So we know that our arrival of staff has to happen before students. And we were planning on that if our original arrival for students was November. But if that gets backed up, then therefore, the necessity to bring in staff obviously gets backed up as well. So this is just kind of where we are at this point in time. And I think we all recognize that it's been such a dynamic, such a fluid situation, you know, that the path changes, you know, very quickly and in short periods of time. But the fact remains that, you know, I think as a board, as a superintendent, obviously, if we cannot vouch, if we cannot confidently say that the work environment is safe for staff, then we can't, I think we can't, you know, good conscience, ask staff members to obligatorily report onsite. But that'll be something we'll have to discuss further. I'll have to brief the board. And I think we'll be in a much better position to make a statement on that in the short term, certainly by Monday night, once we understand what the architect's assessment is.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kascun. Yeah, I think, well said. At this point, I think we're going to take a short break, say about 10 minutes. We can get ourselves some beverages and so on, and we'll continue with the rest of the agenda after that. All right, welcome back. Moving on, let's get back to the agenda. Personnel items, one through four, may I have a motion?
Second.
All right, I see we have two retirements. Congratulations, Anne Engelhardt and Marina Resnikov. Any discussion on anything else in personnel?
I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Resnikov. She was my son's recorder teacher at St. Cloud. So, thank you very much for all your years of service.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Yes.
Mr. Wobstein?
Yes.
Mr. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, curriculum and instruction items, one through four, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I did, yeah, I did just have one, one quick question on the Ready New Jersey reading and writing programs. My math may not have been exactly right, but I think we're talking about roughly 400, 415 student licenses. I was just curious if that's enough for what we need, or is that only what the grant was covering?
Yeah, I think it was, I think the answer is yes, on both counts. So, you know, so in looking at, you know, the total amount of the grant that we had and looking at our other costs and expenses, that was an amount that we felt we were able to reconcile from that total expenditure of $600,000. But the nice thing about the iReady licenses is that they can be, you want to unmute yourself, sorry. You know, they are not necessarily bound to a student in perpetuity. In other words, like, you know, you can start with a cohort of 20 and then shift to another group of 20. So we can leverage that for more than just 400 some odd students. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anything further? All right, Mr. Calabano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Just have to unmute yourself, I'm sorry, for the record, Ms. Merklinger.
Yes, from one through three, and no one number.
Mr. Wobstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff? Vice President Trig Scales? President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, finance, special services items, one through three, and business office items, one through 12. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Calabano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wobstein?
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff? Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. And last reports, item one, may I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
I missed a second.
Me.
Thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wobstein?
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, once again, time for public comment, this time on any topic at all. Again, you'll have three minutes, please keep to the limit, and just give us your name and address when you come in.
Okay, thank you. Again, same, same deal with anyone who's just dialing in. It's star nine, not pound nine, it's star nine. And anyone else is the raise your hand function. And we're going to try again, Patty, Rudy?
Hello?
Oh, we got you, okay.
Hi, sorry about that.
Glad we got you.
I did send an email, since I wasn't sure if I was able to get back onto the computer. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming up with this plan and doing their best with everything that they could. I just asked if you please keep teachers' safety in mind. We do want to go back to school, we want to be in our classrooms. We want to set up our classrooms like we would any other August, but at this time, it's really not safe. We just heard the facts, and now we know it's not safe. We may have been worried before, but now I feel like we're really worried. The HVAC systems, we just heard, are not updated. We don't have the proper sprayers. Teachers will not be alone in their classrooms. If there's an aide, they will have an aide with them. If it's a co-teacher classroom, there will be two teachers. Teachers will go to the bathroom, teachers will walk in the hallway. Teachers will be throughout the building. They're not going to be locked up in their classroom. So please, keep them safe. I taught the ESY program this summer from home. It was fun. Students saw my face, I was not wearing a mask. They could see me smile, we could laugh together. We followed the schedule, we did all of our assignments, they did all of our assignments. It was enjoyable. If we have to go back in September, teaching in an empty classroom to students online, we're going to be worried what's coming through the air. We have a virus dealing with droplets. What's being spread into our classroom that we really have no control over? Please keep us safe. Please allow us to teach from home until it's completely safe, not just thinking that it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Melinda Huerta, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, Melinda Huerta here, 17, Park Drive, Southwest Orange. What, I wanted to know, what is the status of the equity inclusion policy? I know that this was discussed, I believe, two meetings ago. I'm not, I can't remember. But there were further improvements that were recommended from Ms. Cheryl Merklinger. And I want, since she was the only noble, and I wanted to know what recommendations or suggestions she had. I have a couple of tweaks or recommendations myself. For example, the order in which, I don't have it in front of me, but there, the steps that are taken to address, I'm sorry, I'm just drawing a little bit of a blank, because I don't have it in front of me. But in the order in which the students are addressed in terms of intervention, it does say, you know, the disciplinary action comes first before the community engagement. And I feel that community engagement and those resources should be reached out to first before police or officers or anything like that is involved. Yeah, so I think I wanted to hear about what additional input Ms. Merklinger thinks is missing to polish it up, I guess, since she was the only noble last time. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Michaela Bennett, if you can follow the prompt on your screen?
This is Michaela. I just really wanted to follow up on something that I raised periodically and was surprised to learn still has not changed, which is the criteria to be in the honors program. I don't know, I know, Dr. Kascun, you know, I appreciate that you made time to speak about this, but just I want to bring to the Board of Education's attention that, once again, and particularly now, utilizing testing to make any level of determination about a student's appropriateness for honors programming is really counterintuitive on many levels. But especially making honors programming accessible to students who may not test well for reasons, you know, you know, personal reasons, whether it's that the testing, you know, just is skewed in ways that don't permit the students to test well, or also that the students just didn't, didn't enjoy the benefit of the full curriculum, but still have the ability to perform well in honors programming. I think I implore upon you, you've heard the story before, I will not go into too much detail, but you'll remember that our son was identified as a student who did not qualify for honors programming, and has been in all honors, sixth, seventh, and will be in eighth grade. And last year was high honors in every class, in every quarter but one, due to an injury. So I would just implore upon you to come up with different criteria so that students who want to opt in and participate in honors curriculum can do so, and then allow them to determine whether or not it's for them. I mean, if there were ever a time to shift mindset and be more inclusive and give the opportunity to more students, it would be during a pandemic, when you weren't able to test for the entrance, anyway. So that's really the only thing that I wanted to bring to your attention outside of the scope of what's on your agenda. But I think it's extremely important that you get behind the trend, that you get behind what's right, and that you make the honors curriculum available to any student who wants to give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Alexandra Masrahi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen?
Hi, this is Masrahi, 66 Mitchell Street. Just going to ask again my same questions in regards of, I understand if you have not have the answer in regards of the Rutgers, and how the programming is going to be established. And I would appreciate it if then you confirm that you're going to be answering me back to those questions. And then the other question that's pretty much is to the board in regards of the education compensation for kids with special needs, who have presented at the moment regression and majority of their objectives and goals were not addressed during the time that we just finished and moving forward. How is that going to be addressed, and how we're going to be paying for that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Mara Lieberman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Yes, thank you. I was actually not going to speak again, but after hearing, I forget her last name, her first name was Michaela, talking about the GT program, I felt the need to chime in. I have twin nine-year-old little girls, and they go to Mount Pleasant. And we had a situation, they were both in GT all along. And a couple of years back, or a year back it was, one of them just kind of, I don't know what happened, tested funny, tested much lower than she ever does, for some reason. She said she came home and told me she had a headache that day. But after two years in GT with her twin sister, they pulled her out. I attempted to have them, you know, make an exception. It was denied. And I have to say that for a school district to do what they did to my little girl's self-esteem, and, you know, was really an awful thing. She, to this day, is still talking about how, you know, well, Sadie's in it, but she's not. And it's really affected her self-esteem tremendously. And I do believe there has to be a better way to decide who goes to GT, who doesn't. There's got to be some flexibility, there's got to be, just, there has to be a better way. And certainly, in a situation like that, there has to be a way to take a look at it and not, you know, squash a little girl's self-esteem, especially one that was extremely confident. And, I mean, she's still extremely confident, but she had a very rough time with that. And so I just felt the need to chime in on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And unfortunately, if you had already come up to the podium, virtual podium, to speak, the time is past. Any other questions can be sent to the board at their email address. So we do not have any more people coming to the stand at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, closing the portion out, Dr. Kascun, anything?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Alper. Um, I will follow up with some answers to some questions that were posed here in the the second public comment. So as it relates to the the Equity Bylaw. The the Equity Bylaw will be moved forward at Monday's public meeting, which was originally scheduled as a public policy work session for its second reading and its adoption. It is slated for second reading and adoption at the Monday Policy Work Session. Mrs. Merklinger's request, which 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 was a request which I was really planning on doing anyway, was to have our Board Council review the bylaw, as there were some components in there relative to hiring. And we wanted to make sure, in some cases, we will ask legal counsel to review our policies to make sure that they are aligned with code and statute. So it is currently being reviewed by Board Counsel. You know, for any additional red lines, and then we should be prepared to look at a final draft on on Monday, and 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 I'm excited, you know, to to actually be there and to be approving the bylaw. I think it's going to be a good thing. So that's where we are with that. Relative to the questions regarding special education. What I would say in terms of, you know, the question. You know, seems to be a, you know, a strategic question or a question that's looking to understand the district's strategy as it relates to addressing on a case-by-case basis, students who may have regressed while during the closures and how we intend to address that. I think that, you know, obviously, that is a a question that is facing all school districts. What I would how I would answer that is that it it needs to be on a case-by-case basis, right? So, you know, if as a parent, you know, you, you know, you feel as if your child has regressed. Well, then I think we need to, the child study team needs to be called together, and we need to determine the extent to which that sense, that feeling, that perception as a parent is actually borne out within the assessment data that's gathered on the student to determine that. If at such time we identify that there's been regression, well, then I would imagine that then the I E P and the 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 goals and objectives will need to be adjusted to reflect that, and that we will need to determine and put together a plan that in the most expedient manner possible will address that regression, if in fact it's occurred. As far as how we fund it, we're going to need to find a way to fund it, and, you know, ultimately, that's the my responsibility is the superintendent, business administrator in the board to identify the resources to do that. But my overall answer to that question would be that individual parents need to engage in open constructive critical dialogue with child study teams and work through that on a case-by-case basis. As far as the Rutgers program goes, you know, we did have a, you know, a rather lengthy presentation at the beginning of the meeting, which sort of laid out exactly, I shouldn't say exactly, but at least broad strokes as to what we plan to do, but I I will elaborate that on again. So basically, our overarching vision for this is that the 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 dedicated staff member, and I'm not, you know, refuting the fact that the that the state may have resources to offer. But will the state dedicate a staff member who's 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 housed and based in our school district on a daily basis, working for us on a daily basis, you know, integrating with our staff, integrating with, you know, with our our families? I mean, I've worked in public education for 20 years or more, many of them working with culturally linguistically diverse families, and I've never actually seen that in 20 years. Now, I'm not suggesting it doesn't exist, or maybe all the places I've worked, we simply have left that stone unturned. But we're actually very excited about bringing on board and embedding a dedicated staff member for this purpose. So what will their purpose be? I I think it's important to realize is that we don't see this staff member working in isolation from our staff, but working in collaboration. You know, I shared some 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 perspective with Mr. Plata that when I was an ESL supervisor in in a district, a couple of districts ago, and I had been in that district for nine years. Many of those years I spent as an ESL supervisor, and in my time working that district, over time, even as Americano, I eventually built up a rapport and a trust with the, you know, with the bilingual families over time of 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 transactions of trust with them. And, you know, and I've said that to Mr. Plata, I said, you know, this is a good opera, you know, you're going to be arm in arm with Mr. Canoe because it's really important for you to be simultaneously developing your own level of trust with the community. And then ultimately, that should that should reflect out into our ESL teachers as well. And Mr. Canoe is first and foremost is going to be a person who can kind of get into the community and understand what the community's challenges are. There are a whole host of reasons why parents you know, parents of culturally linguistically diverse families don't engage with school districts, not the least of which that school districts are seen as a government bureaucracy, and there can be an inherent distrust or even fear of government bureaucracy. Once you break down that fear and distrust, then we open up open up doors and build bridges. And so Mr. Canoe would be, first line would be getting into the community, making them aware of this service and understanding what their needs are, and then building capacity of our own staff members who work with these families to service them as effectively as he could. And again, we see this as a first step towards a larger cohesive strategy of expanding upon not only our parental outreach services, but also our mental health support services. This is but a step in that direction of building a more comprehensive plan to assist our parents and by proxy our students. That's all I have, Mr. Alper.
All right, great. Uh, Board Member Reports. Mr. Rothstein?
Well, considering the hour, I'm going to yield my time back to the President of the of the Board. Thank you.
Excellent plan. Ms. Trig Scales?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to commend our yearbook staff at the high school. That was the most beautiful yearbook I've ever seen. And how clever with the 2020 and how it played off 2020 vision. I I just thought it was superb. And how they were able to pull that off during a pandemic, I'll never know, but it was absolutely just again, just so clever and so well done. So kudos to them. Mrs. Tony Cliff and I attended the Black Lives Matter March on Saturday, which was sponsored by the West Orange Youth Caucus and the West Orange Young Dems, and we started out at Washington School. And we marched all the way to Luna Stage, which is what, 2.2 miles? And so after we caught our breath, we joined the block party that was happening there, and that was to highlight black businesses in town. And they also did voter registration and another push for the for the census, and some of our fellow citizens rode the float, the census float that kind of went around around town. So it was a really nice day. So just kudos to our young people who are, it's not a moment, it's a movement. Is that, did I get it right? Okay, so kudos to them, and that's all I have.
Great. Ms. Merklinger?
Um, I won't take up too much time, but I just did want to send out our condolences and our thoughts and prayers for after Keith Holly. He was one of the residents, or not residency officers, but one of our security officers at Edison. And so we just wanted to recognize him. I know he meant a great deal to a lot of the members of our school district and our community, so I just wanted to just put that out there to our families and friends. And then I just wanted to clarify my earlier questions. I think with any good discussion, you know, to bring to the table different sides of of an argument or not necessarily an argument of a topic, especially when, you know, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of different views and opinions, and to have that respectful discussion, and and I appreciate that Scott takes the time to hear out all sides and to answer questions, and I appreciate the folks who felt comfortable coming to me, whether it was private messages or emails or, you know, asking me to meet or pulling me aside at at one of the fields or events in town, and just kind of voicing their concerns that aren't always maybe some of the popular ones. For those who that you don't know, I am married to a teacher, so I completely appreciate and understand what teachers do, and that is why I do find that hide them and hold them in high regard. But at the same time, every member of this community, wherever your children go to school, you are still taxpayers, and 65% of your taxes go into our school district. So we deserve to have all the voices heard from everywhere in the community and different thoughts, and I just wanted to say that I do 100% respect our teachers and hear what you're saying. But I did feel that as my role on the Board of Ed is to bring those different perspectives from other parents in the community, so I appreciate everyone billing, being willing to hear different views and being open-minded to that, while also understanding that I find you essential in the sense that you are what builds our children up every day. So I do thank you for that service. And with that, I look forward to our next meetings. We have a lot coming up with policies and reviews coming up, so we've got a lot of work ahead.
All right, Ms. Tony Cliff?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Just wanted to thank everybody, all of our teachers and our families who came on tonight to give us your input. It's really important, and we're going to listen to all of you, and this is a very difficult time, as you all know, and you know, we know that it's not every decision is going to make everybody happy, and I think the one thing when we talk about essential services, we realize that public education is one of those essential services as ours, our teachers, and I think this pandemic has really put that into the forefront. We have been relied upon to give so much back to our communities in terms of providing meals and mental health and training on, you know, making sure our children are safe in terms of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and there are so many components that our teachers and our administrators work on on a day-to-day basis, and when that structure breaks down, we realize how needed public education is and how much we do and how much all of our teachers and our staff do on a daily basis, and I know you all want to get back to, you know, normal, and whenever that will be, I know we will all celebrate that, and in the meantime, we appreciate the dialogue. We appreciate you being here and having these conversations with us and sharing your your concerns and your feedback. You know, I I work for a large hospital network in New Jersey, and one of our doctors, you know, was saying that, you know, in order to control the pandemic, we really need the testing to be much better. We can't we can't control the pandemic if we're testing people and you're not getting results for 10 to 14 days. You know, we need to be testing people three, 3 million a day, and we're not nowhere near that yet, so you know, I I like the phrase of sending our, you know, how do we educate our students safely, and I think that's, you know, in the core of my mind, that's what we're looking at, student achievement first and foremost, but certainly keeping everyone safe in the process. So again, thanks so much for all of you sharing your concerns with us. We are listening and we are, we are here. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you. Well said. Just one other thing for me. During Personnel earlier, we neglected to welcome aboard our newly hired principal at Kelly School. Congratulations to Mr. Joel Castillo, who will be joining the district starting in November. Welcome aboard. With that, I think that's a full lid. Our next meeting is, as previously mentioned, a policy meeting Monday, the 24th at 7:00 PM right here on the internet, and then following that, our next regular board meeting is scheduled to start at 7:30 PM on August 31st at the high school in person. So hopefully, we'll see some of you there. Have a great night. We're adjourned.
This is to announce that when I end the meeting, it will end for both those on and off camera, and no other business will be conducted once the meeting ends. Thank you all, and have a great morning.
Thank you.